I'm going to call this meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Mayor Sander.
Here. And if we could have the meeting, video recording and playback schedule, please?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Thursday, March 21st at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, March 22nd at 6:00 p.m. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Very good. Next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation. Loriann, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And Walt Little, you are here for the invocation. So if you'd like to remain standing after the pledge, Walt will lead us in the invocation.
Please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In this moment, draw us unto yourself, Lord. Make us aware not so much of what we have been given as of all that we have received and so have yet to share. Deliver us from the arrogance of assuming we know enough to judge others. Deliver us from the timidity of presuming we do not know enough to help others. Deliver us from the illusion of claiming that we have changed enough when we have risked so little. Oh, Lord, nurture us in the song of the lover, the vision of the poet, the questions of the child, the boldness of the prophet, and the courage of the disciple. Amen.
Thank you, Walt. All right, we have presentations tonight. Item 5.1 is an update on the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center. And I think Joyce, and how do you pronounce your last name? Beu?
Blue, like the color.
Blue, excellent. Joyce Blue is here.
Thank you so much for allowing us to present today. I want to give my sincere apologies on behalf of Faith Whitmore, our CEO. She couldn't be here tonight, but she really wanted me to acknowledge Linda for supporting the Family Justice Center. So thank you for your support, Linda.
Obviously, you're going to tell Garrett how the Family Justice Center came about.
Yes, if I can figure out.
Linda Budge created it, just like the trees and the...
Let me figure out how to switch this here. So the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center, I guess you've got to turn it on, started in 2016. So right before that, about four years before that, 120 agencies came together, did a two-day strategic planning here in Sacramento and said, "We need a Family Justice Center here in Sacramento." So the Family Justice Center provides services to victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, elder and child abuse. And the concept of a Family Justice Center is to have a lot of agencies under one space. So we have, so we're located at 3300 Power Inn Road by the, right across the street from the Family Court in the same building that the child support building is in. We're on the third floor and we're open Monday through Friday from 8:30 until 5:00. On site, we have several community partners. We have Adult Protective Services on site. They're there for a couple of days a week. We have the Sacramento County Department of Child and Family. And Adult Services, they have the, we have the Safe Center. Are you familiar with the Safe Center? It's a child advocacy program where we have four forensic interview rooms where law enforcement is on one side of a window and a child is being interviewed. Most of those children have maybe experienced child sexual abuse, or maybe they witnessed a loved one being murdered. And so they're interviewing those with a forensic interview specialist. We also have a program called United and Guided on site. We have a team of attorneys on site. We're the lead agency in Sacramento that does the domestic violence restraining orders and elder abuse restraining orders. We have a, I'll get more into the services real, in a minute here, a couple, I'm going to get in ahead of myself. Just wanted to come out here, though, and present some data to you on the clientele that's coming through. We've seen about 27,000, we've had about 27,000 visits so far since we opened. And that does not include the number of individuals that come into our onsite partners like the Safe Center or United and Guided or Adult Protective Services. That's strictly domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, or elder abuse. Our homeless numbers, well, we had, as far as kids go, we have almost 20,000 kids under the age of 17 have been impacted. These numbers are through December 31st of 2023. We started collecting data on the homelessness. We started collecting that in 2020. And so we had 3,166 individuals report that they had to leave their home as a result of domestic violence and became homeless. We started keeping track of, taking data on individuals who've been strangled because that number is so huge. When we first opened, we had nine people reported they were being strangled. We weren't trained in it. We weren't assessed in it. We went and received training in 2019 and 2020. We started collecting data and you can see how high that number has gone up, over 1,500%. So we get an average of anywhere from 68% to 73% a month of survivors coming in, disclosing they've been strangled, so every single day. We also started collecting data on those individuals who, when they come in, their victimization, their perpetrator had a gun. And we started collecting that in 2022. So you can see, we've had almost 1,400 individuals who had a gun. And the reason why I want to back up a little bit on strangulation, why it's so important, it's because it's the ultimate form of power and control where the batter can demonstrate control over the victim's next breath. If they've been strangled once, they're at 750% chance of being strangled again and even killed. So all of our staff has received training and/or advanced training on strangulation. In fact, we created a countywide strangulation protocol with other partners, all law enforcement agencies, all hospitals, community-based organizations, we're all a part of the protocol and we presented it to the Sacramento Board of Supervisors for their endorsement. So hospitals and law enforcement can start assessing for strangulation. So I just made this real quick draft for you, so you can see out of, in the county area that Elk Grove is our number one, is the highest as far as domestic violence cases that come through our office. Citrus Heights is number two, and then Rancho Cordova is number three for clients that we serve. And then as far as, hello there. I don't know what happened here. It'll come back up. Well, as far as the services that we provide, we provide case management services. So we have a team of social workers who follow a survivor all along. So they'll come in through our door, they will get connected to a social worker, and that social worker will do safety planning with them, do danger assessments with them to assess for the lethality of homicide, strangulation assessments, and then navigate where they need to go. If they need to go see our legal team, then we'll connect them to an attorney or one of our legal advocates. We're one of the few family justice centers in the country that has our own attorneys. Most of them contract, pro bono work with them or do some contract with them. So a survivor will come through and they'll get a social worker to do case management with them, plus they'll get an attorney. We also assist with California Victims Compensation. We do the Safe at Home Program. That's a male forwarding program. It's not a victim protection program. I think one of the things that we do really well outside of crisis intervention and safety planning is our advocacy piece. We do counseling and therapy. We have, we offer child therapy. We have a child therapy program. So we do a lot of child therapy. We've had a grant for, we're going on our second and a half year, and we've seen quite a few kids, about 150 or 160 kids have been going through our child therapy program. We do expert witness testimony in the courts. Our expert witness who's on site, he's a retired police officer, but he's also licensed clinical social work and is in great demand with our DA's office and other DA's office. Some of our programs, we have a housing program where if a survivor of domestic violence has left their place and they need to get into a new place, we can financially support them as long as there's funds there and provides up to six months of case management to make sure they can afford their housing later. Our human trafficking program, we're the only county in Sacramento is, we have the only human trafficking 24-hour, seven-day-a-week hotline. We have case managers who ride, some ride-alongs with law enforcement. They do case management and it's, human trafficking is a very dark world, so they spend a lot of time working with those individuals. We've gotten about 160 women out of that life into safe housing. I'm very proud of that. We have a gang violence prevention programs in two neighborhoods, North Sacramento and Del Paso Heights with the Neighborhood Wellness Center and United and Guided. Our catch program is Children and Teens Creating Hope. This is where we do the child therapy, but we also do Camp Hope America. We send kids to camp each year. This summer, we're sending, we're going two weeks. We have one week for younger kids and one week for older kids. We measure hope in that program. There's a tool that you can use to measure hope and see if their hope scores increase, which they do. We also offer leadership opportunities for their youth, for those youth. So we do something with them every month to keep them engaged and hopefully have a healthy life. We have Buddy. He's our comfort dog. He's a labradoodle and he's just amazing. We do mobile services. So if you had someone out here that really needed some support, we have three vehicles we can come out here. We've been to the hospitals doing restraining orders at bedside, delivering them at people's house, or going up and meeting them in a safe place. We have a health and wellness clinic. It's not fully open yet, but it is a place where we are looking to find, seek funding eventually, so we can do strangulation exams right on site there. And then we have what's called a hidden homicide program. So we work on cases that sometimes someone will come in and say that their loved one had, was allegedly committed suicide, when in fact, the evidence might show different that it was a homicide. So we work with them and trying to get those re-cases, those cases reopened. We just created a domestic violence high-risk team because the homicides for domestic violence in Sacramento is huge. So we figured if we have this high-risk team with law enforcement probation, community advocates, hospitals, batters treatment, when a high-risk case comes, referred to us, then they can all work together to help reduce the homicide in our, in our community. I've got, the allergies are like killing me. I can hardly talk.
Fine, you're fine.
So just to wrap up here, though, we do offer some training. We offer a 56-hour basic training for all of our staff and our interns. We offer it a couple of times a year. You're more than welcome to come to the training. And we have a lot of experts come in and speak on the modules that we train on. We do training to 911 dispatchers. So the first call comes into a dispatcher. Those dispatchers get very little training on domestic violence, in particular assessing for high risk like strangulation or if there's a weapon involved. So we've been doing training with the 911 dispatchers. We also do training for law enforcement on assessing for high risk. A lot of them are really getting it now. Rancho Cordova out here has been very supportive in referring survivors to us. We do training to healthcare providers in hospital, in particular Sutter and Kaiser. We do, we have the non-fatal strangulation protocol, but we've been doing a lot of training on strangulation prevention. We participate in a lot of collaboratives like the Domestic Violence Prevention Collaborative, the District Attorney's Domestic Violence Death Review Team, and in 10 minutes, that's what we offer. So I would welcome you all to come and have a tour of the Family Justice Center. If you haven't been there, it's beautiful. It's a very warm setting. It's very inviting. And if we can't offer, if we, if we can't offer something to a survivor, we know that we can at least offer hope when they leave there. And my last comment is I really want to thank all the veterans in the room for their service. So do you have any questions?
Questions?
I don't have a question, but it's amazing, the breadth of what you all are doing now. And it would be interesting to know if former District Attorney Jan Scully really envisioned either, she probably envisioned the need, but to, to be able to reach so many different areas and avenues, it would be interesting to know if she really anticipated growing the program this big and, and...
Yeah. I've been there from day one and she, when she comes in, she's just in awe on how much we've expanded and have grown. And the need, unfortunately, the need is so great, but it's so nice when a survivor can come in and minimize the number of times they have to tell their story. Tell it one time and we can get them connected to their resources. We don't just give them a resource list. We do a warm handoff. We advocate for them and really try to prioritize those clients so we can save their lives and their kids' lives.
I'm pretty sure that we all know about it because she talked about it at her, like her going away lunch or dinner.
Right.
And, and yeah, it's just, it's amazing how much your services have expanded. It's sad, but it's really amazing that you're able to do this.
Yes, it's, like I said, it's a beautiful place. I hope that you'll come and tour it sometime.
Thank you so much for your service. I really appreciate that. Could you share this soft copy? You know, most DV victims don't know where it is, don't know who to go to. I mean, I would like to say DV survivors, but they're victims because they don't know where the resources are. It'd be great if you could share this information in contact. That would be awesome.
Sure. I'd like to. Thank you.
I just want to thank you for your good work. I've been to your fundraisers over the years.
Thank you.
Rancho's has been at a table at a fundraiser occasionally, not every year, but we've done that.
You've always been supportive.
But more importantly, we've tried to, you know, hook up our city services, whether they be through our navigator or police department, with the work you guys do, which is really important. And I can just say personally, I had a foster son go through a lot of stuff in the social service sector. Not your services per se, but he would have qualified in retrospect. And just last week, I was looking something up because I had to respond to something for him. And in a three-year period, he was in court 29 times.
Yeah.
In three years.
You know, that's what you don't want to happen.
The difficulty of getting services or a kid just mentally intact through a process like that is incredibly difficult. You know, trying to get counseling for, for a foster youth, six months to a year, if you're lucky, you can get to it. Food stamps for him, once he left my household and was trying to live on his own, that's a year or two to make that work. You would think and it should work like this, but those services are incredibly difficult to access. So what you're doing is basically putting all that together, that I was sort of trying to assemble on my own, you're putting all that together and helping them in a way that they can partake of it. And that is really, really powerful. So I just want to thank you for that good work.
Thank you. It's like if you, if you look at a will and Family Justice Center as a hub, you know, and all these spokes, we'll get them to where they need to go. And again, trust me, we will not just give them a resource. We're going to make sure, we get calls on the weekend and at night and we think, gosh, I can't go through the whole weekend without not taking care of this person. So thank you for all, all you do.
That's, that's a great point, because when someone hands you a resource list, that's when I would start to get queasy.
Yeah.
Because you knew that that was not someone who now was going to help you get to it. They're just sort of saying, "Good luck."
Exactly. And then, you know, we don't, we don't have that kind of heart, so.
Excellent.
So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, Loriann, I think you have a new employee to introduce, and you have to follow that presentation.
That's a very sad presentation to follow. That was an amazing presentation. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. I am Loriann Carl, and I am excited to introduce Sage White, who has joined our community engagement team. This is actually Sage's fourth week with us, and she's going to be working on our many wonderful community engagement programs, primarily focusing on our neighborhood engagement. She's had a chance to meet some of you at our tree plantings and has actually now had a few different times to be in this room, showing our students how to be a council member. So I want to just let Sage share a few words, and we're very excited to have her.
Hi, good evening, everyone, Vice Mayor, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm really grateful to be here and thank you for the warm welcome. I'm really excited about this role because my heart is in passion is really with community, working with the community. I have had the unique opportunity to work at the state level, the county level, and I feel like I found home at the city level. This is really where I feel like I'm meant to be. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you, getting to know the community even better, and I'm just really grateful for this opportunity. So thank you all, and I look forward to talking to you each individually at some point. Yeah, thank you.
That was a great comment, because you have arrived at the level of government where we can actually get things done.
The best one.
More so than anywhere else, right? Those lower levels of government that exist elsewhere. Right. Okay, very good. We're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the council for any matter on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to our city clerk, who is seated right over there. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up by me at that point on the agenda when we're going to hear that specific item. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state their name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item, not on the agenda, unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So, Madam Clerk, do we have public comment?
We do have public comment. We'll start with Larry Ladd. Following Larry will be Jessa, Rashid, Sarah, and Helen.
Hi there, Larry Ladd, one of the co-founders of this city, and I want to take this opportunity to point out that one of the pillars of this community, Cheryl Longsworth, is in the hospital. And she, you know, I first met Cheryl with the PTA, Peter J. Shields, then she professionally helped guide the PTA, and then the Seraphim, which you guys honored just a little while ago. And if you know anything about Cheryl, she's a very selfless person who takes a lot of initiatives. So with her hospitalization on Facebook, by the way, Cheryl Longsworth is the person who told me to get on Facebook, so, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for following my logic. And so Cheryl today was saying, please, is expressing her total gratification, her thankfulness to not only hospital staff, but support services like blood banks, organ donation stuff, what have you. So I wanted to echo Cheryl's message to you guys. And then very briefly, for show and tell, this is not a diagram of my blocked coronary arteries. This is, this is where Saddam Hussein chose to manufacture perchlorate. And so I just wanted to give you a simple diagram there explaining one of, as a geographer looking at context, you know, it's the sunni on the top, the she on the bottom, receiving whatever they can dump there across the whole southern part of the country. So if you wanted to try and poison a water supply, it was the most strategic place to put it. And so that's why I insist on looking at Human Defense and Two when the EPA evaluates perchlorate toxicity again. Just a simple diagram of one of 100 of why I'm concerned. Thanks, guys.
Nice sweatshirt, Larry. Eastern Illinois.
Next speaker will be Jessa Rego.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Jessa Rego. I live in Folsom and I work here in Rancho Cordova. I love Rancho for its really cool businesses and its really cool diversity of people. Immigrants are a huge part of making this community so vibrant. I want the whole world to know, but especially our immigrants here to know that we care about human rights. We're asking for you to put on the agenda the resolution that the community groups have presented about a ceasefire in Gaza, and then to pass it. I want to bring to light on public record the United States' role in destabilizing so much of the world that drives so much refugee migration. I want to highlight the part of this draft resolution about that the State of Israel would not be able to maintain its apartheid regime without enormous military aid provided by the United States every year, which takes money away from us and things we desperately need here in our own community. We declare not in our names. We know international affairs are not normally part of a city council's scope. For one, I have been contacting my federal reps and the president for almost six months now, and I've never been so insulted and disappointed in their lies and propaganda. We need to pressure them from the town level upwards. For example, Senator Padilla had the audacity to reply to me with a quote about "the violence that began on October 7th," unquote, as if I lived under a rock, didn't know history, couldn't read, and never met a Palestinian. Another reason this councilor should address this issue is that it does affect us here in our local area. Over the last over 160 days, I have been losing my mind watching this. Not only a boy's head squished into the shape of a rectangle between the ceiling and floor of his apartment, not only a baby's brain hanging out of her skull, and that times 100 every day, but also the grave absurdity of our community members paying their taxes into the very weapons that will maim and kill their own families. Between being sick to our stomachs every moment of every day, trying to participate in every form of protest possible, including economic strikes, many in our community like me aren't doing any non-essential shopping or activities. We don't know how much longer we can keep showing up to work and acting like everything is okay. This is already affecting our economy and mental health here in the greater Sacramento area. I went to the Holocaust Museum in eighth grade. It was the Jewish people who taught me how to recognize genocide. Please don't believe the lies that this is anti-Semitic in every way. We've had Jewish people at every single educational event and protest. I'm going to skip to the end here. Future generations will not only ask us what we did to stop the slaughter right now, they will ask us what we did to stop a 75-year brutal illegal occupation, especially after decentralized journalism made it plain for us all to see. Never again means never again for anybody. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rashid.
Good afternoon, everyone. I begin with the words that Prophet Moses used when he was sent by God to go to the Pharaoh and ask the Pharaoh to let the people, the children of Israel, go. And what it means is, "My Lord, give me the confidence and ease my task for me and remove the incorrectness from my speech so that they may understand me." And I was thinking about what I was going to write, and I guess fortunately, Ms. Blue came before me, and she gave me a few tidbits that I could use. I know everybody's seen it. They've seen the images. You've heard what Jessa said, so it's not new to anyone. Yes, we are asking for a resolution, and I know the city does not have a policy, but Mayor, you just said, "This is where things get done." So that's all I'm asking, is to put a resolution so that we can pass this. And we may feel like we don't have the power to do much because we're just a simple city in, you know, in California. But I represent a community of about 150 families here in Rancho Cordova, and my community elders gave me the responsibility of being the president of the board. So I come here as myself, as a longtime resident of Rancho. I've been here since 98, different jobs within the Rancho Cordova area, family, kids are here. So basically, I consider myself as much a Rancho Cordova resident as anything else. So the ask is, again, to put a resolution, pass a resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza. I can give examples, but again, like I said, everybody has seen that. I will, I will end with what Ms. Blue was talking about for the Family Justice Center, is that there are children here in our Sacramento area that are, that are seeing their relatives murdered, that are seeing, that are being homeless. In Gaza, the entire area is wiped off. So we're talking about 1,700 kids here that are homeless. We're talking about 17,000 kids there that were murdered. Injustice anywhere is something that we have to stand up against. Let's say it's incumbent upon us as leaders, as a responsibility that's been given us, that if you stand up for just injustice one place and not another, I think the word for that is hypocrite. So I'm asking that we put this on the resolution, and I will end with, I forgot the gentleman's name, the one who delivered the invocation, deliver us from the timidity of not knowing, of thinking that we don't know enough to help others. We do know enough and we can help others. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sarah Alzoun.
Hi, good evening, Councilwoman.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Sarah Alzunun, and I'm a Palestinian-American. I've been living in Sacramento for 30 years, and I work for the State of California, right around the corner from here, on Trade Center Drive. Before that, I worked at Franchise Tax Board, and I feel like I'm at work more than home. So this is kind of like home to me, Rancho Cordova. And I actually used to work with Joyce Blue at the Child Abuse Prevention Center. That was about 15 years ago. I'm here today to talk about the ceasefire resolution. I lived in the West Bank about 12 years ago, and although I was the closest I've ever been to my father's side of the family, I was unable to visit them due to the Israeli military law. They did not allow me to travel into Gaza, because there is a blockade. No one's really allowed in, no one's really allowed out. It's really hard to get those travel, those travel plans approved. So I was unable to see my family, and I told myself, you know, in 10 years, I'll go back and I'll go see my family. And I'll try again, but I was unable to see my family, because most of them are dead. My one-year-old cousin, Yasin Zanu, never learned to walk, and he never will, because he was also killed. And I want you to think and try to imagine how small a one-year-old is. His death certificate was printed not too long after his birth certificate. This was completely preventable. His death, like my other family members, was senseless and funded by our American tax dollars. California alone has sent $7 million. We have local congressmen who have agreed to send more money for military funding to Israel, and I'd love to see that money reinvested in our communities here. In fact, reinvested in programs like what Joyce is doing right now. She's doing amazing things for victims of domestic violence, foster children who I used to work with. I would love to see money go into those kinds of programs. One in six Americans can't afford to pay their utility bill, and this is exactly why I feel like this is a local issue. 40,000 civilians, as of yesterday, have been killed, which is half of the population of Rancho Cordova. Please allow your minds to grasp the grotesque and excessive destruction of human and earthly life in the dropping of bombs on a strip of land packed with millions of people for the last six months. The amount of weapons being sent to Israel is 10,000 more times than the amount of aid. With every day this continues, I'm at risk of losing all my remaining family members in Gaza. At one point, I was losing an average of one family member per day. 56 of my relatives were killed in 60 days, and they wouldn't be alive today if there was a ceasefire. And we can't bomb our way to peace. Please consider supporting a ceasefire resolution. A ceasefire is straightforward, and it's widely supported among many citizens.
Please wrap up your comments.
Let's take a leadership stance and support the 77 congressmen and women who support a ceasefire. If your moral compass is attuned to the suffering of only one side, your compass is broken.
So is your.
Thanks.
Helen Willen-Bachar.
I'm Helen Willen-Bachar, and I'm deviating from the flow of everybody prior. I live in the Tiffany area, and since the 80s, I have been maintaining easements along Rod Bodre. I've been there since 1983. Many people thought our beautiful easements were maintained by the county of Rancho Cordova. It's been me. And why am I here today? Because August, Sep, was it, May to August is the ban on plowing and disking and cutting grass in the nesting areas for the ground birds. For this, this affects the, what used to be the Cassis Orchard, and which is now the TruMark Orchard. We need to make sure that they do not plow anymore, do not disc. That is illegal. Do not bring in sheep, do not bring in goats. Last year, the city allowed them in to cut grass that was three feet tall, and they cut it during nesting season. I was in the Rod Bodre House property, maintaining the grass there, and doves came flying over the fence. I was unaware that they were ground nesters. We've done a new study, the group from Par, which is Protect the American River, and there are more animals living in that orchard than when the original study was done. I am requesting that the City of Rancho Cordova make the TruMark Company aware that they must do the weed abatement prior to May, and the fire department said, two to three feet tall grass must be removed. So my house is protected with the Rod Bodre street. But if that field catches on fire, the East Tiffany 17 luxury homes could go up in flames, and it could cross over to affect me. So why have I been maintaining a total of almost four acres of property for years? It's because I want my home to be protected. And anybody that's seen me out there knows, even today, I was out there clearing easements. I removed the grass. The fire department said last year what TruMark did was wrong, and the city has not, TruMark has not taken down the fencing that they put up to protect the elderberry bushes. They do not have all the elderberry bushes listed. I want the, I will request the City of Rancho Cordova to take an aggressive approach to TruMark and make them comply with the federal laws dealing with the ground nesting birds. Thank you.
Mayor Sanders, that's all the public comment that we have.
All right, thank you all very much. We are gonna move on to council reports, and Garrett, you're up.
All right, so I'll go through a couple things. I had a meeting about the JPA. There's some new movement, and I will talk about that later. We had, I went to the girls' softball complex, our amazing facility we built, and did their, let's see, which one? This is their 59th?
59th.
59th Red Book, where you can see all the kids. I was almost going to pitch, but Siri went in there, threw a smack. She definitely threw the ball. Sword people, it was a solid throw. We're gonna work on that.
I was to do the first pitch, I did the first pitch.
It was definitely a pitch of some sort.
Yep. Counts.
Counts, good, checked the box.
I met with college tours, working with the Rancho Cordova School District, and working with predominantly the Rancho Cordova High, about doing tours of HBCUs for our kids that are interested, and very excited about that. Hopefully something.
For those who don't know what that acronym is, would you like to share?
Historical Black Colleges. So kids that are part of the, the Black Student Union that are at your school. We had talked about having, setting up what's called Black Tours of the Colleges, so you would get taken to HBCUs or Historical Black Colleges, and see if that's something that we want in your future. We, of course, all you guys amazingly, we'd love to see you go to college or beyond, or into a trade or a union. But the most important thing in Rancho Cordova is that you get a job. So those are some things we're looking forward to, but we as a city are willing to support you guys as you take these next steps. Donald actually started what's called the Promise Program, which basically allows you to go to our junior college, which is Folsom, for free. So you guys, if you guys want, after you're done with high school, if you still want to go through JC, you get it for free. We used to pay for one year, now they pay, then they decided to pick that up at the national or federal. Then, of course, Donald said, let's do the second year. Then we did the second year, then they picked that up, and now we give free books, money, and I would say gasoline to get you there to school. There, here at the city is very unique. We basically do whatever we can do to remove anything that takes you from getting to college, if that's something, a path you want to do. And we've now accepted even to try to go towards trade. So if you don't want to go to college, but you want to go to trade, we want to help you do that secondary education. Rancho Cordova really invests a lot in its kids, and you are our guys' future, and we look forward to helping you guys out. I went to the St. Jude Dream Home. This was really special. I didn't realize that we actually did this, but we stepped up and we helped to put one of those homes that basically helps kids with cancer, childhood cancer. And I got to sign the City of Rancho Cordova, my name, to the actual place where we had it. They said, literally, this has been the best experience they've ever had, ever, and it's now the top tier, and what other cities are supposed to do is the example of what they did at Rancho Cordova. So they actually go into other cities and say, can you be more like Rancho? Which I was like, I want you to come up to council and talk about this, because anyone that says that, that's such a big compliment from, from a, really a national firm, to say that they've never had a city be this welcoming or work this well with us, ever. So we'll drag them up here, gave a little donation, and, you know, coming from that, I have cancer throughout our families, it's a blessing, and for people that don't know, childhood cancer pretty much is the most gut-wrenching thing ever. And to see these kids survive, the kid that we actually did the house for unfortunately passed away a month ago, and so we weren't able to see it, but, you know, it's one of those things that he helped and strengthened other kids, and there's a lot of people that make it, and a lot that don't. Got to go to the RC Little League and butcher every person's name. And, no, don't nod.
Oh, that was a rite of passage.
He got to do that.
For being a mayor or a city council member.
And so what? I have never agreed to do that.
You should. Usually, there's a trip there, but I have been asked for that, and I will do teams. I will sometimes do coaches, but I will not do that. God, it was so bad, and I was like, what do people want? Like, I swear they did it, they put fake names in there for, just to trip me up. Like, what is wrong with people?
It's on the back of the kid's jersey.
It is impossible to say. Gakafleki Flannin? I was like, that is not a name. It had some ampersands and an exclamation point, I was like, this is ridiculous. So I said.
I would just have had them get in order, and then just pass them.
Well, I literally said, this is ridiculous, in the middle of it. I was like, this is ridiculous.
So what's worse, that or the first pitch?
Oh, man, that first pitch, though. That was a ding. Woo!
These are the two challenges of being elected officially in Rancho Cordova.
Listen, I, I feel bad about, I can't do a softball pitch, I'll mess that up to save, so I respect Siri. The cutest thing, though, was after I finished butchering everybody's names, is they have the first pitch, and in Little League, they choose the youngest player and they have them throw the oldest player. And it happened to be this family that has 10,000 children, 10,000 children. So they, they came up there, and the kid went to throw the ball, and he puts it out there like this, and then can't figure out why it hasn't moved. So he looks at it, and he goes, okay, I got this, switches hands, and then throws it out again, and keeps the ball in his hand. And is looking at it, and he can't figure out for the life of him why the ball won't jump to the mitt, like it always is supposed to do. I was, cutest thing I've ever seen in my life. Cute, I mean, the guy was, he was a foot tall. Like, it was a cute, like, it was a cute, it was a, the best is the ID, he was like, I'm just gonna switch hands. I got this, it's gonna fix it.
Performance under pressure.
Right? And then the dad came out there, and he kind of took his hand and kind of does the whole, eh, and then got it. And then I was supposed to meet with Anu, who's a partner of ours that's going for Measure H, Measure R funds, that is closed officially. So we will be forcing our staff to review all 1 million of the things you've put in, and I appreciate my staff and Alva, many, 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 many hours that you'll be putting in to review each one of these. And I'm looking forward to the meeting that we're gonna have. Remember, the first meeting was nine and a half hours long that we had to review all those stuff. And now we've shrunk it down to like a couple hours, so that's it.
All right, very good. Linda.
Yes, Little League was absolutely delightful, regardless of how Garrett manipulated people's names.
Guys for being here.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Bye, guys, thank you. And I can't tell you how many times Garrett and I have repeated the story about this adorable little person, who was probably all of two feet tall, and he just, he stuck the ball out, and it didn't go anywhere. It was just adorable. Community Council Awards, absolutely delightful evening. All sorts of wonderful people in the community doing terrifically, terrific, great things. I did meet our new, our new employee at the tree planting. We celebrated Arbor Day by planting a tree out in the front lawn. That was Little League. SBTC JPA, David missed that one. That's the Sacramento Placerville Transportation Corridor, JPA. It's the organization that manages the rail corridor from 65th Street all the way up to Placerville. And because at Regional Transit, we need to write a report, so I did that, and I provided that for all of you. And especially because David was not able to attend that day. And he and I both, we wear different hats, but we're both there. Regional Transit Met, and I think that was the meeting where we agreed on the restructuring of the RT Board. I don't think I've talked about that before.
A little bit, you did.
Okay, all right, well, so that actually, that actually came about, and the board will be capped at 13 members, which provides an equal number for the City of Sacramento, an equal number for the County of Sacramento, two for Elk Grove, and one each for Citrus Heights and Folsom and Rancho Cordova. But it also sets it up so that if Galt and West Sacramento want to join Regional Transit, then there'd be a seat there for them. Some of us attended the School District's State of the District event, and as, as was said on the, on Facebook or something this morning, there's nothing like beginning an event like that, which could be kind of dull, but there's nothing like beginning it with a drum line, that was Cordova High, and ending it with a drum line. That was the 12 kids from Mills Junior High, and it was absolutely inspirational. I think they're all on YouTube. The district has created several videos of what's going on at Cordova High, what's going on in the district, and they're really absolutely worth watching. Our youth, our youth center celebrated its first anniversary, and David was able to attend that one. It was absolutely jam-packed, with all these kids having the best time. Following the State of the District speech at Folsom-Cordova, the superintendent, Sarah Kleagan, spoke to community council on Friday and talked a little more specifically about our Rancho Cordova schools. Girls' softball, so for Donald and for David who couldn't make it, I brought you copies of the Red Book. Congratulations, David, on sponsoring three teams. They gave you three teams.
That's great.
So you know you spent $1,500.
The city is in the process of entertaining groups of students from the different schools, touring them in City Hall, helping them do a mock City Council meeting. I'm sure the kids never realized that whether or not people would be allowed to keep chickens was such a controversial event, at the point that it was originally discussed. And Micah and I got to meet the, meet the kids from the student council at White Rock, and Micah asked them, what was the most surprising thing about City Hall? And their first comment was that it was so big, but the second comment was the fact that they were amazed at all the art all over City Hall, which is absolutely delightful. Way to go, kids. And then I hope everybody had a great St. Patrick's Day yesterday. Our family certainly celebrated with the obligatory corned beef and cabbage. And, and I'm thinking maybe Donald has something to say about that. So that's all.
Really quick, before you jump, I also want to say thank you to VFW 1010125. Mr. Billings is sitting in here. He's been having Citizen Academies on how to surf the web safely. So hopefully I can find an information time and get that out, if you guys are curious on how to surf the internet, the black web, and of course, cyber security for small business. I'll have this up in council if you guys are ever curious and need the help, because honestly, I've seen from big city, a city right next to us called Brentwood just got ransomed, and they had to go to a city, a state of emergency, because they lost all their data.
Brentwood is near us, is that what you just said?
Yeah, it's an hour and a half. Yeah, it's an hour and a half. East Bay.
I'm thinking UCLA, Brentwood.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 no.
No, no, the 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 place that calls itself in the bay, but it's actually part of the river, but we're not gonna talk about that.
West of Stockton and east of Antioch.
I grew up near a place that called themselves La Selva Beach. There is a river place near here that is Rancho Cordova.
Yeah, that ransomware problem is a serious business. When I was at CES in January, National Security Council was there, did a briefing with some people. And told us about the the billion dollar, multi billion dollar industry it is for basically Russian hackers at this point. So they have tools available free that people can use to test their systems, some of which are AI directed. Or that's what they claimed at the time. Um, but people don't tend to update and they don't tend to put proper passwords and they leave back doors open. And crazy stuff happens.
Yeah, it a whole city got 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 taken advantage of. And so just wanna say, if you're interested, it's upstairs and thank you for citizens willing to step out and give free training and education.
I'll be fairly brief because I've spent in the last sixteen days about two days at home. So um between travel for my day job to some banking conferences, I then uh flew to Austin. To attend this year's South by Southwest conference. And I I will say uh ransomware was a very large conversation there uh among governments and other things. Um, the Civic Track, which is what I was attending, um runs parallel with the US Conference of Mayors IOC Conference. And I will say this year, they relied much heavier on those attendees to be presenters. So most talks at South by in that track were moderated panels of mayors. Talking about affordability and a lot of other things. I will say that one of the fascinating ones, the mayor of Oakland. Trying to remember where the other two were, but really what they what they have started to focus on in the larger cities. And I'm saying larger than Sacramento even. Is is designing a city without parking is really what they're they're moving towards. That mass transit is how you're going to get in and out of mega cities and bigger. And the the really fascinating thing is that if you look at like cities in China where. I think if I think they said the top tw- the 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 twenty largest cities in China are all larger than New York. Um, or getting there and to the point where like like car ownership is going to be a thing of the past in these these mega cities. And it just has to be. But but I will say that South by has truly become the the kind of bellwether of what the next fad is in tech. And Garrett and I, I think remember going, what was it? Twenty eighteen was the first time. And still, you know, you had carmakers and you had banks and you had other like traditional sponsors of things that you'd see on TV. And then a few years ago, it was all NFT and crypto. And now, if you walked through that that expo last week or two weeks ago now almost, um it was like seventy five percent AI. And everything on the planet is being solved by AI. And ev- like, I don't care if you're producing music or art or you're doing security or you're doing planning for a city. Or designing, you know, a a general code update or whatever, everything is AI. And and it was so fascinating. I mean, for those of you who haven't been to that kind of a conference, going to CES is probably the closest thing to this. But like, you'd have expos where it's not a German company. It's the country of Germany has a section of the expo hall. Korea has a section, not Korean, not a Korean company, Korea. Right? And and like I have a guide at home that goes over and all it was 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 AI companies from Korea. And what their different softwares did and addressed using AI. And literally, AI was barely talked about twelve months ago at the same conference. So it's it's just really interesting kind of where things are moving. Then I came home for a, it was supposed to be a day and a half, but because Little League moved their opening day. My son's first Little League game was on Wednesday of this past week. So uh we stayed home to do the Little League game and then went to the Civic Well Conference that happened this past weekend. Um, in Yosemite, this is the former local government commission. And that was a really fascinating conversation. Mainly, I would say the takeaways I had were um designing resilient communities, especially around natural disasters. And fire floods, now tidal waves and 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 soil erosion on the coast. But again, a a very vibrant conversation. And it it wasn't held there last year because they were. They, none of us would have gotten there last year anyways because of the storms, but they actually moved it because they were renovating the 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 meeting space that they had this in. But again, it 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 was it was also really fascinating to see a lot of rural conservative elected officials from California. Showing up to what is arguably the most progressive liberal body of elected officials. Or or organization in California around um progressive design and 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 energy production and and whatnot. I will say that the conversations that we're going around, especially around fiber. And what we got out of the deal that we got. Is very much sought after because a lot of the, a lot of communities now are looking at how much they're gonna have to pay to get it. So the deal that we struck when we did. Doesn't sound like that exists anymore. So kudos to staff and everybody else that figured that out a couple years ago. Because now a lot of them are sitting around wondering like to upgrade their their infrastructure, they're gonna have to set aside tens of millions. To get somebody to come in and be willing to do that. And what was really fascinating, there was um kind of a sidebar conversation around the 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 whole AT&T. Like leaving rural communities and not wanting to continue to service the phone lines for them. Um, and what that's gonna do to seniors and a lot of other folks. So really fascinating conversations. I I would encourage any of you who haven't been to that conference. It's they they always get world-class speakers because of where they hold it. Um, and people just want to come there to be there and so and their and their, you know, their meal ticket is they gotta come and speak if they show up. But there are some really fascinating conversations going on in the planning area, especially I would say. Bigger cities really are looking at at how they plan their communities and and it doesn't include cars anymore. Or and or it won't in the future for a lot of them. The only other thing I wanted to say to the the students, I think Garrett, you you're giving me way too much credit when it comes to the Promise Program. But the one thing I wanted to clarify is as the state stepped in and started funding year one and year two of the twelve units. We're now supplementing up to fifteen units for students so that they're actually going really full time to where they could transfer after two years. But we're also giving direct payments to students. So when you say gas money and these things, we don't. Um, and I hope I'm I'm explaining this right because I don't see Ray D K or Stacy here to to correct me. We have learned in working with Folsom Lake College that students are more successful if we just give them the money and let them figure out what bills they need to pay. And so I believe they're getting upwards of eighteen hundred a year if they go full time and meet the the requirements. But they can decide if that needs to go to food or rent or a car or their books or whatever it is. But we figured out it it burdened the students so much to have to turn in the bills and do all these things that they wouldn't end up doing it. If we just gave them the money, they had better grades and they stayed in school longer. So.
And it cost us less to manage it.
Well, it it's not us, it's it's Folsom Lake College that was doing it. So it's saving them the headache, but the students are more successful in the long run. But yeah.
And that's open to everybody, by the way.
Everyone in the city. Yep.
Thank you, Mayor. That was brief. So uh I attended with my colleagues, um actually Linda, um the Proclamation for Trees where we celebrated the California Arbor Week. Uh, we planted our tree to show our commitment to a sustainable future. Um, I was uh with the mayor and council member Budge for the Rancho Cordova Youth Center. And along with Mr. Gatewood and Miss Council Member Budge for the girls softball opening day. And before my first pitch, I did say that I'm not really good at throwing, I'm not really good at catching. But my value add was that I run really fast from base to base. And um to encourage the girls, I said, you know, that it is what you bring. It doesn't have to be just one thing because everybody brings a different expertise to the game and anything you bring in is a value add. I also attended a a Women's Day event where I talked about being a woman, a minority woman in politics. And how it is to be here and how it is to get there. I attended a charity event here at City Hall uh for a humanitarian action network, which is a nonprofit that works. For Sacramento homeless population. Attended the opening for uh the newest pizza in town, Pizza Twist. They had really um wonderful flavors of pizza, butter chicken pizza, paneer pizza. I mean, it was, it was very different and I think the crowd, people that were there really enjoyed it. Um, with the police chief and I, we were there at the kite festival, uh the BAPs uh temple. I think this was on Saturday. Uh, we attended that and uh I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Very good. Well, someone suggested that I could have the most unique council report ever. Um, based on my last week, which I guess I could. So I went to the NLC meeting, serving as its president, and I've kind of given you guys a rundown what that's like before. It's five days of schedule from seven AM to midnight with about, oh, I don't know, a hundred and some events. Packed in there. So it's a very unique experience to be that scheduled. Um, and to sort of have staff like at your elbow constantly nudging you here, getting you there, et cetera. Having to make fifteen speeches in a day on different topics. Also a very unique experience, but there are so many committees at the NLC, they all expect leadership to address them. So it was a, it was a very interesting, um very interesting meeting. Of course, probably the highlight, at least the one that people saw back here, was I got to introduce the President of the United States to the meeting. Because President Biden spoke to our meeting. And before that, I got an opportunity to talk with him sort of one-on-one for about twenty minutes. And I think that was one of those times in your life when you sort of look down at yourself and wonder, what am I doing here, right? Like, how did this happen exactly? There there are pictures. I don't need to share them, but there are. I I mean, I I will share it actually. If you're if you're curious, I can I can send it or someone could pull it up probably just by Googling. Yeah, they're they're around. But it was a a very fascinating experience. I also got to talk with Doris Kearns Goodwin for a good period of time, uh famous historian. Yeah, and talked about Illinois and the young Lincoln and the interactions between Lincoln and my family back then, which would have, which was really cool. I've done a lot of other things, you know, at NLC, but I've gotta say that one, this one ranks up there. Speaking at Davos at the World Economic Summit or speaking at Consumer Electronics Show, those were pretty awesome. Those are awesome moments when you wonder, why am I here? But this one was uh was kind of the big one. I will say probably the most gratifying thing I did in the last week was when I did the presidential address at NLC. And I made a big pitch for nonpartisanship among local government elected officials, particularly in an election year. And what happened when I did that? Was I got thunderous applause repeatedly from that group. Now, many people think all elected officials are partisans. But the reality, even for those active enough to be in DC for this meeting, there was nonpartisan dominance of the group, which was really, really cool. So I used the line, uh I think probably the biggest applause line was, I said, we all have potholes. We don't have red potholes and blue potholes, we just have potholes. And that was a big applause line. So it kind of gives you the feeling of, you know, what people are thinking during this particular election year. Yeah, it was very interesting. Um, I also participated in uh St. Jude's. Uh, I went on TV, I think, what day was that, earlier this week to do an announcement with them. About the uh St. Jude's Dream Home Giveaway that's happening here. Oh, gosh. Dream Home Giveaway, I think tickets are still available in that Dream Home Giveaway for, it's a hundred dollars a ticket, I think. Oh, two hundred and fifty a ticket. I was mistaken. But that is a great thing. It's the second time. Yep. Thank you, Donald. So Rancho Cordova met the president. Let's view it that way. That's a good thing. That's a good thing.
That's a good week.
That's a good week. It's a unique week. And I also thought, you know, this will never happen again. It's like, this is a one-off thing, right? It's it's odd to frame it that way. Uh, came back from that meeting. I went to the Cordova Community Council lunch, the Rancho Cordova luncheon last Friday. Uh, Sarah Klegian was the speaker. She gave sort of an overview of academic stuff happening in Rancho Cordova. It's a very entertaining speech. Um, the Rancho Cordova Youth Center, the RCYC, had their one-year anniversary that a couple of you have mentioned. Great turnout. Uh, Rick Sloan, I think, took some really cool pictures there. We might want to get our hands on those. Like, one was a giant grouping of kids who were there. But that was a very fun event. It was great to see that many kids activating that space.
Um, there will also be a video. Cal Cap was there.
Oh, yeah.
And um filming and interviewing uh not only adults but kids. And then showing all of the different activities that they were being introduced to.
What a treasure they are for us. Absolutely. Um, I met with both of our senators while I was back in DC. They both sent their well wishes. And today I met with the um Region Seven EPA Administrator. Along with Congressman Barrow, the Air District, SMD, SECOG, we're all represented there. And the discussion was generally about Green Means Go and how Rancho Cordova can best position itself for funding. Um, along with other jurisdictions in the area that deal with revitalizing, for example, old commercial corridors. And I think that's my report. And Siri, thank you for backing me up when I was out of town. I appreciate that. And I'm not gonna judge your softball throw. I don't. Although that was a pretty funny description. We've all been there. I can tell you that. Everyone here has probably messed up the pitch at some level.
Way into the air and then it fell back down and hit the mound.
Really?
I actually managed to get it to the glove one day, one time, but there was one time when it went that way.
I, not being very thoughtful once, went up there and reverted to my high school mode and was going to throw a pitch. And the catcher like ran a little like. It's like, oh, sorry, wrong sport.
If if anybody, so I I will say, if anybody is ever feeling bad about this, the two things to go look up on YouTube. Is um go look up Gary Delabonte. For those of you who listen to Howard Stern, you'll know who that is. Go look his up and go look up Fifty Cent doing the first pitch. And then you'll feel a lot better about yourself. Two very reinforcing examples of how bad it can go. And let's just say people got hit and they weren't by, they weren't by home plate.
Just for the record, I'm not feeling bad about my pitch.
Excellent. That's good.
Fifty Cent is a rapper. Yes, said that out loud. And 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 he is now fifty, I believe this year.
Really?
I think so.
All right, we're gonna move on to the city manager, see how he feels about softball pitching.
I'll leave the hard work to all of you uh for the softball pitching. But uh just a few updates, one to 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 take off some of the comments that were made. We did celebrate the first year birthday of the Rancho Cordova Youth Center. There were three to four hundred people that showed up to that event, so a great attendance. Uh, and also part of it was trying to take as much advantage of the youth center as we can and have new signups and new kids attend the after-school programming. And so we got quite a few signups as part of that event too, which was part of the big reason. And maximizing the the use of the youth center as much as we can and um max out those uh those uh fire code issues and things. To uh get as many kids in there as we can.
That's outstanding.
The uh other is we did receive, Councilmember Gatewood, thank you, a hundred and twenty applications for CIF. So that's the latest update, around a hundred and twenty. That's about thirty more than last year. So as you look forward to your future uh packets, uh just be prepared for a a much larger um package of CIF applications. And then Congressman Barra might have been busy today because I think we did have a meeting with Congressman Barra this afternoon with our um city development team. He was very interested in hearing about our current and future growth plans and how that relates to uh future infrastructure opportunities. And so really wanted to take a regional look at uh at infrastructure, not just kind of locally, but also how does it serve the region? And so we were able to have that conversation with Congressman Barra and talk about what does that look like for us moving forward in these future infrastructure conversations that we have. And that only serve us, but also serve the region as 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 the infrastructure needs are. Uh, not just about what our needs are, but about the regional needs of connecting jobs and housing together. Uh, and then last, uh just a quick, um since uh our VFW is in the room and Cliff is is in the fr- front row. There was a reminded that we did um at our last all-hand city staff have a representation from our VFW. from our VFW, who gave Officer, our Youth Services Officer, Soraya Loudon, an award for the Public Servant of the Year. And so want to recognize that. And so, since I see Cliff over there and others, and, and recognize that and let the council know that we had a nice award ceremony at the all-hands staff team to present Soraya with that award. So thank you, Chief, and thank you, RCBD team, for their efforts. That's it.
Very good. All right, we're gonna move on to item nine, consent calendar items. Consent calendar items, consensus of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent calendar agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. Are there any items the council wishes to pull from the consent calendar?
Yes, please, David. Can we pull 9.4?
Okay, we will set aside 9.4.
I'll move the balance of the calendar.
Second.
Is there any public comment regarding these items?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment or items on the consent calendar.
Okay, I already have a motion and, was that a second?
Yes.
That I heard, to approve everything but 9.4?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
So that's a unanimous vote. And item 9.4, Lynda, do you have a question, comment?
And I don't need a, a staff report. With apologies to Mica and Albert, I can't vote for this. I'm sorry, the scale and scope of this project is more applicable to downtown LA or the intersection of 680 and 280 in San Jose. And I think it's completely out of scale for, for the East County and creating unnecessary hardship for a variety of people with very little public return. If we're really lucky, we'll be able to salvage Cattlemen's. If we're not, a very important restaurant in the East County will go away. I just, I thought about this and thought about this and I can't vote for it.
Okay, I definitely hear you on that, having sat through the meetings. I think it's a very unfortunate design and, and one I think that's kind of hard to justify. It also appears that it was driven by Caltrans, the early decision, never considered an alternative to what Caltrans has on the ground. So they sort of said, we must continue with what we have, even though it may not make complete sense. So that...
Do we have, I ask my question to the city manager and the city attorney, is if we don't enter into this cooperative agreement with, with them, we don't have any discretion to deny or to prevent the plan that they have from going into, into action, correct?
So I'll, I'll probably defer to Albert, our Public Works Director, but from our understanding is, you know, there, there is acquisitions required in the city of Ranch Cordova as part of this project. So in theory, they need our approval in order to do acquisitions in the city of Ranch Cordova to, to move the project forward.
They're acquiring public land that the city controls?
No, just to acquire private property in the city of Ranch Cordova. That's a...
Can, can somebody explain that a little bit more?
State law, perhaps.
They're taking out the gas station.
No, no, I, I know what parcels there are. I'm, I'm trying to understand what our role is in this. Because to, to my understanding, I thought Caltrans was driving the bus here and decided this is what it looks like. The county and, like, we're, I mean, in theory, the state can eminent domain these and do appraisals and, and pay for them, right? The same way we would probably do something if we, if we chose this route. So what, what is our role in this?
Good evening, Mayor Sander and City Councilmembers. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. The right-of-way that's, that the county is pursuing within the city of Ranch Cordova is largely two parcels. There's a relatively inconsequential sliver at the back of Rudy's Hideaway and a more and a more consequential proposed, proposed right-of-way acquisition associated with the Chevron that will, will have, have greater impact on that. The approval that the county needs is approval from the city of Ranch Cordova for the county to pursue those right-of-way acquisitions.
Those two?
Those two.
Okay. And, and the reference to, to Cattlemen's, if, if we didn't pass this, I guess is my question, to the reference of Cattlemen's, the county's already done that or is pursuing that on their own? This wouldn't prevent that?
Cattlemen's is not within the city of Ranch Cordova, so therefore it's at their discretion how they move forward with that.
And have they moved forward already on that?
They, to my knowledge, they've moved forward with the conversations but have not, not concluded the right-of-way process. So there's still various options that, and conclusions that may come out of that process.
And if I remember correctly, the sliver that you talked about at the backside of Rudy's, while that, that part doesn't impact Rudy's operations or their parking lot, that facilitates the replacement of the aeroget off-ramp and that giant flyover over the original flyover of Hazel, of the freeway and, and Folsom Boulevard.
That's a portion of it.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
No, I've, I've seen the design. I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
What, what I'm being asked to vote for, but essentially, it's to allow the county and, at the direction of Caltrans, to acquire the, the Chevron gas station on the corner and a small part of, I, I remember when this first came up, then the owner of Rudy's, it was first year I was mayor, came over and met and was very nervous about it, but it, it wasn't the county pursuing him, it was an attorney pursuing to represent him. And so, I think, actually, he said he had talked to you about it, Lynda, recently too. So, yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't want to lose Cattlemen's either, but it also sounds like, I mean, there, there's not a way for us to stop that from, from our perspective, because we don't have any controlling interest in it. So, okay.
And the approval is actually for the, for the county to enter into right-of-way negotiations. The conclusions of those negotiations may have various different outcomes, particularly with the, with the Chevron. The most likely outcome could be a take of the entire parcel, but potentially there could be other options as well. The same is also true for Cattlemen's. There are various options which could end up with a take of the entire property, could also end up with reconfiguration of the restaurant and possibly other options. And that's not, not going to be fully understood until they complete those right-of-way negotiations.
But if we vote, but if we vote no, does it do anything or do they just go around us?
If they vote no, then if, if the city of Ranch Cordova Council votes no, they would not immediately have the ability to pursue, to pursue right-of-way in Ranch Cordova and probably the county would have to look at what other alternatives there are.
So is there a judicial avenue for them to go around us? Would that be, if, if they wanted to continue, to continue to pursue this without our approval, does it just take them longer and get a judge to do it?
Yeah, I think we would need to look into that one further. I'm not, I don't have an answer of that. I think that there could be certainly a legislative solution. I'm not certain that there would immediately be a judicial solution.
I'd like to move to continue this item to a date uncertain.
Agreed.
Second.
Motion made, seconded and thirded. Any other discussion? Roll call, I suppose.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Pulapati.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Motion passes to continue to a date uncertain.
Just for clarity, Lynda, I did have meetings with the county, two on this topic.
At least.
So we've got a little more information than, than the rest of you, but it is available. I think staff could probably brief you on it.
Well, I've seen the, I saw the design years ago, so I, I knew this was coming. I didn't, I was not aware that I was gonna have to vote on it until I saw this on the agenda last week, but I wasn't entirely sure what I was voting on. And I'd still like to understand, I, I was planning on probably voting yes, but I, I really just want to understand what are the implications of voting no and does that really do anything or can they just go find a judge to compel them to do it anyways? Which is, my guess is gonna be the answer, but I'd like to have that answer.
We, we can come back with a little more detail on what happens.
All right, that was item number nine. Item 10, consent public hearing items, there are none. Item 11, public hearing items, there are none. Item 12, there are regular calendar items, 12.1. Clerk, if you could read the subject, please.
Mills Crossing Project Update.
And Stefan, looks like you got the lead on this.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilman. I'm Stefan Heisler with the Community Development Department, also here to present the Mills Crossing item, update item. We have several members from our Public Works team, including Albert Stricker, Edgar Medina and Christine Cordy. And then also from our consultant team, we have Corin Crawford from Griffin Swinderton. And joining us online are Jeremy Hart from LPA Architects and Nate Cormier from Rios, our landscape architect. So without saying too much, I'll turn it over to Corin to give us an update on a number of key elements that we've been working on the project over the last 12 months and share some exciting news about next steps as we move into the design and development phases of the project.
All right, well, thank you, Stefan. Can you, you're...
Now you're on.
I'm muted?
No, now you're on.
No, okay, good. Good evening, Mayor Sander, Vice Mayor Pulapati and, and councilmembers. Real pleasure to be here in front of you live and in person on a beautiful sunny, you know, daylight savings day to talk a little bit about Mills Crossing. I think we're gonna start with a video and, and kind of look at where we were several months ago as we did very robust community outreach. This is a video of our design charrette that we held, which really provides some of the underpinnings for the, the design and project updates that you see. We'll start there.
We're just really excited celebrating the future of the Mills Crossing Project, a great partnership between the city of Ranch Cordova, the community, creating a mixed-use environment and place-making for the future of Folsom Boulevard, and really excited about the new partnerships that we'll develop in the future for this development.
We're here tonight at our Mills Crossing Design Charrette, a major mixed-use, community-oriented central gathering place along Folsom Boulevard in the future. And we're looking at the different uses that are going into that project and how we can design them to meet sort of the community needs of residents in Ranch Cordova in ways that will make it a very beautiful spot that everybody's gonna want to hang out.
We're helping the Ranch Cordova community with master planning and landscape architecture for Mills Crossing. We've got people in there collaging, drawing, putting stickers on stuff, helping us really think about what the character of this important community destination should be and what are the activities that are gonna animate it.
The stations were really, four stations focusing on a deep dive on the aspects of the project that we're designing and needing to get community to put on. My space was really to talk a little bit about how the project's all gonna stitch together and operate, how it's gonna work, and to talk and engage with residents about just sort of like the operational aspects of the project, what it's gonna feel like to live there or to go there and enjoy the different cultural and civic and community amenities that are there.
I am really excited to see the retail spaces and the potential for sort of organic markets showing up, whether it's a farmer's market or festival markets and things, and also outdoor events. Really excited about the potential for the stage and the event lawns. And I, I like that it's in a place where it's really accessible from the American River Bike Trail. I can see both my wife and myself coming down to Mills Crossing pretty frequently to enjoy what it has to offer to our community.
So tonight was a really fun event and I had a bunch of community members come out and we talked about the overall project. And I had really fun conversations about the history and culture of Ranch Cordova and how that can be reflected in the Mills Crossing Project.
I saw a lot of people listing great ideas about big playgrounds, community gardens, a fitness area for kids. These are dog parks, there could be an indoor cat park maybe. I like all the ideas that you guys put on, everybody put on there. I think they were all great and I'm very excited to see this new work. Thank you.
So anyway, we, and I'll start on a couple of slides here, but that, I love to go back and watch this video periodically because it's just a great reminder of what we're doing here, right? And that we had a really great opportunity to hear over, you know, 150 community members speak and provide feedback and we really took that guidance into what, what, where the project has currently gone from there. In addition to the charrette that we had last year, we probably also, you know, we attended over five or six different pop-up events that the city put on. And so we were also in touch with another sort of 200-plus community members that got a similar type of opportunity to, you know, provide, you know, stickers and mark different preferences. And so we, we developed a pretty nice database of, of, of feedback there that was quite valuable. So we have a pretty simple agenda here. We, you know, started off on community engagement, number two, and I have a little bit more about that. We'll get into some design updates, some implementation updates and to some, and to some next steps. So what we aim to accomplish today is really provide an update and gather feedback. We heard a lot from the community and would love to hear from council and other community members who are in attendance today about what they see, ways that we can make it better and, and really, you know, we continually seek this feedback as we deep dive deeper into the schematic design process. This is still the beginning of this process and so there is room for further, you know, further input, obviously, to keep making a better project. So you did see the video. We talked a little bit about, you know, that, that, the video was embedded into those slides, but this is, th- these are the materials that we prepared for the community at the charrette and, and the pop-up events to give us their preferences for the architectural character. We decomposed architectural character into a variety of different parameters, things like materials, roof lines, whether you have flat roofs or angled roofs. We talked about glass or talked about screening structures. We generally talked about the general architectural character of the buildings, whether they're modern, forward-thinking, progressive, futuristic, whether they have historical callouts. Then we provided opportunities for folks to draw on a blank plan, to cut out different photos and stick them on different pieces of the plan and rank their preferences for what elements of architecture they, you know, they deem attractive for the project. And this is just to give you a feel for some of the feedback that we got. We got a lot more feedback, but it's really fun to see the fruits of that, to see people collaging and writing and ranking different choices and preferences. And some of it came about, some of these rankings are distilled into what you see here, where there was a preference for angled roofs. So you're gonna see some of the buildings have some features that provide some angularity, others that are flat, but we tried to look at angles. We know that there was a lot of, you know, glass is very attractive from a building feature standpoint. The, the community was pretty split on natural or high-tech materials and generally thinking there was a sense of, you know, forward-thinking architecture. And we did something very similar for the open space also. We had generally two, two takes on the, how the open space could get laid out and we asked community members to provide rankings to that as well as boards where people could place stickers and talk about the types of features that they'd like to see in the, in the open space that is a part of the project. From the open space standpoint, what, what the result was, was that when we looked at open space that was referencing and composed of outdoor rooms, kind of creating open space, you know, thinking about, thinking about the organization of it in, in, in the sense of these rooms versus a tapestry of spaces, the materials, the ways that different experiences with the material stitched together. And the truth is, they really liked them both. And so what we provided was a synthesis of both of these two options in the, in the concept open space, which we then continue into more detailed design. So what are those designs looking like or what, what's, what's the update for how that design shakes out? And again, taking a little bit of a step back into... And again, taking a little bit of a step back into Mills Crossing, we do like to compare, you know, we've took, we took, you know, we compared the Mills Crossing with other similar cities, similar populations that are local to here, and their sort of community hubs or civic hubs and what, and how Mills Crossing compares in terms of overall square footage and that. Now, there really is no perfect comparison. Mills Crossing is a unique project. We haven't seen any project like it, per se, because it does try to solve for, you know, providing a community amenity and economic development. So it's got elements of commercial and housing and the like. But it is kind of instructive, just at a high level, to look at what we've been embarking upon and how that generally compares with similar community hubs in the region. And so the site plan that we, that we have is very similar. We've got, you know, we've got a base site plan and then the plan that shows with future expansion. We generally toggle back and forth to see how this site plan can grow and morph over time. The master plan, as it were, really focuses a plaza and buildings pushed up to create a strong frontage on Folsom Boulevard. The idea is to really activate and improve the Folsom Boulevard corridor. So it was really important to have a strong presence along Folsom Boulevard. And then lots of open space, open space in the plaza, open space towards the north, and then in orange to create two residential parcels for housing development of a variety of different types, multifamily and townhomes. Those would be for sale, the for-sale townhomes. And then, and then building four. So in a first phase, or sort of as the first project gets brought online, you've got three buildings with future expansion for a fourth building. And then as we get a little bit more into how this could actually look, we, we take a 500-foot view of the project and how that initial phase can get brought online, and then future expansion of the project in the project green to the north. So all told, back in 2020, we always kind of generally talked about Mills Crossing to be around 80,000 to 100,000 square feet of community commercial facilities. As we've narrowed in on the project, that's come into around 80,000 to 92,000 square feet, depending upon the expansion, the future expansion. And the way that that breaks down from a space standpoint is you have community and public-serving facilities, the community spaces, a health center, which we'll talk a little bit about as well. And those are solving for and providing the community amenity pieces. And then the economic development pieces of the project are options for commercial development, 18,000 up to 23,000 square feet of commercial development. Again, stimulating, bringing new businesses to coexist in the region. And obviously, the housing is another key piece that's a driver of economic development within the project. So as we get more granular into the various buildings, building one is a 36,000-square-foot building, which really is occupied by two anchor tenants. You've got an office anchor and you've got a, a health, a community health clinic. The office tenant is a market-rate-paying anchor tenant, and the community health clinic is a, is a well-known operator that is responding to needs of the community. It's known to be a medically underserved area. And then when we got into the project, the, there was a lot of, there were surveys that we got. And the need for both mental health services for youth as well as seniors and the broader population was something that we, we knew was, was asked for within, within some of the initial documentation that we got for the project. So these two key pieces of the project are seen as something that are, are serving the benefits, these dual benefits that are generally called for. This building pays for itself. So I think that that's an important key piece to think about, is that it's really occupied by two anchor users, which helps to think about what the activity of the project will be when it generally gets open.
Corin, can I just make one quick comment and ask the staff? On the clinic building?
Yep.
The students that were in this room earlier tonight, their predecessors were the ones that asked for that. They, they came together, they did their own brainstorming, and both of, they had like two separate groups that actually did brainstorming of this and said that they wanted mental health services for youth as part of this. I hope at some point, we can present this and show them what the people that came before them in the program that they're in right now helped to shape a project that four or five years later, you know, we're looking at what it might look like, where it's going to be, how big it's going to be, who's going to run it? Because frankly, a whole bunch of teenagers decided to weigh in on this. So hopefully, I know they've already left for the night, but we get this in front of them.
They're here quite a bit as a pro-youth program, so I'm sure they're always looking for opportunities to present different things happening so we can follow up with them.
Thank you.
So that, the building on the left is a three-story structure?
Yes.
As depicted here?
As depicted.
And that would be home to the two uses you just mentioned, the rentable office space and the clinic?
So the bill, the entire building, the, the office, the rental office would be on the left-hand side, and then the clinic is on the right-hand side. Now, some of that could get changed, you know, you could have, it's all one building, but you can have one use occupy one entire floor, and then the other use occupy the, I mean, the other use occupy the, you know, a floor on top as well. So there will still be some, you know, discussion and updates for how that will arise. But the idea is to try to create as valuable a building for the city of Rancho Cordova as possible. So when you think about having tenants on one large floor plate, that's just a more valuable tenancy type. And so when we hear feedback from, from office brokers, they say if you can create a large floor plate and have one tenant on one floor, it means that they just value that building so much more. So there's still a little bit of conversation going on with the brokerage community about that.
And I very much appreciate the rooftop venue. We're always looking for creative places to do events. That would be a rare thing in the region. You know, if it could be on top of the three-story part, probably even better. But getting elevator access up there is probably a challenge.
Sure.
You gotta put air conditioning somewhere.
Yeah, that's right. But yeah, that, that has particular value, I think.
And then, so when we, the thing we wanted to talk about in showing how this building could vary is that while we're showing these renderings, renderings are, are still an approximation to what it ultimately looks like. And, and as we go from these concepts into more granular design, we note that, you know, you can look at all these different color configurations for the building itself. There's still those types of conversations. And then there's also just the idea of like how the facade wants to be built out. So these are some inspiration imagery, which go back to what I was saying before, when we decomposed architectural character into different types. So you can look at this as a base building that can be varied with color. And then we can also say on the, the left-hand side, think about selectively placed art and additional glass at different places of the building. We're all talking about facade design, right? You establish a base, and then you say, how do we want to continue to dress the building up? In the middle, for example, there, you know, these, these are designed to be relatively affordable ways that you can continue to start to work on making a more high-impact building. And we want to do it in a way that's very responsible, right? We've got two anchor tenants, so you're not going to get any more money by spending a lot of extra money on a really amazing facade. However, you do want a statement building too. So there's this balancing act of, you know, how much money do you want to spend on additional glass and art panels or exterior lights? When you're not necessarily gonna, you've got the anchor tenants, you're not going to necessarily drive revenue for that. But at the same time, what's the kind of building that creates the statement that you're looking for? Color and roof line articulation, that's another example of the ways that we can continue to look at designing facades. And then here's another example building on the left-hand side, which is not too dissimilar in its core, right? In terms of height and, and the, and the like, where you, you can have a combination of glass and color, lighting, materials variety. And then on the right-hand side, you can look at selectively placed building screens and signage. And so I do note that building one, here's another look at building one, where we start to play a little bit more with more art, more windows, more angularity in some of the facade elements. And if you look at that image that I'm showing with the arrow, you can, you know, that, those kinds of panels can be placed on that area of the building where you integrate the lighting, and that, those panels could be this metallic orange, if those are things that council and community generally like. So these are the things that I'm trying to do to, you know, to discuss and illustrate the fact that we can start with this base building, and during schematic design, we'll have more conversations about just the right balance of architectural character and, you know, you know, utilitarian, affordably-priced buildings to, to serve what the needs of the community are. Building two is really seen as the gem of the project. The genesis of this project really started with the arts, and the council wanted to make a statement to support the arts. Again, the arts are about economic development. Arts stimulate, you know, investment in regions. Arts draw, create a destination, draw people in, create commerce in a general area. So the building two is a 25,000-square-foot art, a community art center. It would house both performance arts and visual arts. And it would provide quite a statement in the daytime and in the evening for right on Folsom Boulevard. This is a depiction of the art center, and just talking about how this building would have a nice frontage with signage on Folsom. And also, you could imagine, you know, nighttime summer film festival series where you project movies on the side of the building and have gatherings outside in the, in the plaza piece of the project itself.
I was just going to point out for, for the, the outdoor movie screen, Rosemont High designed that into their, their gymnasium setup and quad to where you could actually do that from, from another building that had to be angled in the right way and stuff. But if anybody's interested in seeing something like that designed on a community building, we could, I'm sure, arrange it. But they, they actually did that. And when you walk up, you're wondering, why did they paint the whole, the whole upper half of that building pure white? That's why they did it.
And I think that, you know, you can have panels. You know, these are, you know, metal panels on the side of the building that can be gray, say, a light gray. So it does have some color, some, you know, some attractiveness during the day. And then in the evening time, it still can support movie screens on the side. The interior of the building, really just to show you that the building has a variety of different kinds of spaces. The centerpiece of it is a 300-seat black box theater. That's been something that has just been a part of this project since we got involved, and before that we got involved. When we got involved in the project, the city had commissioned studies by AMS to profile all the different performance venues in the region. They really identified a 300-seat black box theater as something that there was a gap in the marketplace. So this would be, you know, from the exterior and the architecture, you can tell this is a real premier art center. And in terms of what the offering is, it's a unique, well-sized, 300-seat black box theater in the kind of performance art format that is flexible and dynamic. You can do internet broadcasting there in one evening, and then in another, you could have, you know, live performances. And then, and then the, the building and the spaces contain, you know, very flexible gallery spaces, studios for visual artists. So you can imagine doing artist-in-residency programs there and, and the like. And then it's designed to have ample storage. Where our theater programming specialist is looking at all the support spaces that are required to make a really nice functional performance and, and visual arts, multi, multi-art center. And then on to building three. Building three is referred to as the community hub. Sometimes we say food row, we call it a community hub. It's really designed to have full, you know, you know, community-serving uses. One of the uses is, on the floor plan here, a commercial kitchen incubator, serving again. It's, we, we, we've heard a lot about workforce development, and, and one of the key engines, economic engines of the region is the food economy. And so the supporting of a, a commercial kitchen incubator, incubating food entrepreneurs, has been something that has been seen as very sought after. And then having a flexible community hall that has space for a veterans lounge as well. That community, flex community hall can provide a much-needed space for cultural events, weddings, banquets. But also organizations like Folsom Lake, you know, Folsom Lake College, the Rancho Cordova Center next door, are very interested in workforce training, not only for the medical space, but also flexible classroom space. And this could be a good space for that. They've talked a lot about, you know, interest in these kinds of partnerships and the kind of specialty spaces that you have. And then even SMUD is interested in STEM-based workforce education classes. And they just need flexible open space that they can be creative with. And this is the kind of space that's designed around a building that looks good, but is also affordably priced in terms of its construction costs to provide these really nice, high-bay, open-air types of spaces that are flexible for all the different kind of programming and partnerships that are generally out there. So again, we look at this building and, you know, again, I like to always say that, you know, these renderings start to give you a pretty good feel for what the building ultimately looks like. But they don't, they, as we continue to go into design, we'll further and further refine it. So I also provided some images of the design intent of building three, because these are the buildings that are the same kind of structure, right? The same steel-based structure that you can put a variety of different windows and different material types of, you different, utilize different types of building material to create a really high-impact type of building also. So here's a good look at what this could look like. Here's another series of images of very similar buildings that really depict the kind of height and scale and diversity of different materials and colors that you can integrate into these buildings to give you a feel for what the impact of what this building ultimately will be like. And it will look quite similar in lots of ways. And then not to be forgotten about is just the interior spaces that this building provides for and creates. As I talked about before, these big open spaces, high-span creative spaces that people create kind of, you know, design schools and living labs and art classes and all these other types of uses with these big, you know, garage roll-up doors that bring in lots and lots of natural light. And then we wanted to talk a little bit about some of the relation to the open space of building three. So if you're standing in the plaza, building three is to your right. The art center is across the plaza to your left. This is what we call food row. Now, obviously, these choices of tables and chairs could be very different, right? This is not a proposal for what this would ultimately look like. But we are really thinking a lot about the indoor-outdoor connection between building three and what the plaza can look like. And when you talk about food row with the, you know, the commercial kitchen incubator space combined with the event space that's there, and you can think about, you know, food trucks and really activating this plaza with different programs and activities, it can start to be a pretty special place. And then this is looking south onto building two with building three and a trellis behind building three, a trellis structure behind building three to your left there, as if you're standing on the project green. And then we are also providing, we did some work to provide, to work with staff to suggest some housing guidelines for the project also. Now, we are not the housing developer. We are, you know, developer of the community commercial and open space piece of the project. But we're also playing the role as master planner, you know, providing the master plan for the city. And so in doing so, we've also talked about some, you know, guidelines to help guide what the housing would ultimately be like. So these are two options for how housing could get laid out. I think it's important to note that the, all of the housing, whether it be the townhouses in the northern section of the, the site or multifamily site on the eastern edge of the site are fully parked. We're showing now We're showing now, kind of looking at a, you know, the, the, the different parcels where you can look at how, um, the multifamily works with parking. And then the townhouses have two-car garages, you know, um, in, inside for, for each of those. Um, this was developed by architects who are studying the city's planning code and working with staff to look at, um, how, how this could ultimately work from a circulation standpoint and, um, and the like. Another is just to show another option for where the multifamily site could fit on the western side of the site. Generally speaking, most of the feedback and the, um, appeal has been around the multifamily site on the eastern edge of the site. The community had a much more favorable view of this side of the site for a multifamily site, but, but there is, there's flexibility is, is what, is what, what, what the point is. And then we've got some renderings just to gen, to generally demonstrate the feel of what the housing could ultimately be. And these are some renderings of the townhouses and various pieces of the project. So, you know, our, the architects developed a 3D model and modeled out what this site plan ultimately would, would look like and feel like and suggested some character. The disclaimer there is really important to note is that this is not a proposal. It simply is something to respond to. And then on to implementation. So there, this is a slide which kind of, which really just tries to summarize some real implementation challenges that we've seen to the project and some solutions. Generally speaking, the, the message here is that this is a project that is, you know, full, you know, green light, you know, a feasible path forward. But we do want to address three things that are just generally challenging for any project that's out there. Um, one are inflationary pressure on construction costs. I like to talk about the fact that, um, if you have a hundred million dollar project at six, seven percent inflation per year, you send, you spend six or seven million dollars on a yearly basis on nothing but cost escalation. So time is of essence and the more and more, you know, I mean, obviously, we, we, we want to spend all the money on program and getting as much out of the project as possible rather than on, you know, cost escalation. The other are some, uh, obvious challenges that we're seeing with state budget deficits. So we have with, uh, partnership with staff, the project has been awarded 19 and a half million dollars of grants. And it's uncertain, at this point, there's been some indication that some of those grant funds could get clawed back. And so we are sitting in a bit of uncertainty over the next several months about just how, what, what pool of funds we're going to have for the project. And then obviously this lengthy approvals process, um, kind of goes back to, it, it, somewhat, um, ties into points one and two above, but some of the solutions are thought of as cost containment strategies and phasing. So cost containment strategies include things like, we had a parking structure earlier in the project. We took the parking structure out to save costs. That's something that we could obviously revisit, right? I mean, I know the parking structure was something that was very popular. Maybe it's something that in a future phase you could build, but it, for surface parking, that's the more economical, uh, parking solution. It saves money. We've right-sized the building to match target budgets. And we've also looked at prefabricated building systems for cost efficiencies. Like building three is a good example of a prefabricated building system that is, just has a lot more cost efficiencies, but it can still be designed in such a way as to have a lot of real architectural character as well. And then we've talked a little bit about phasing. So in talking about phasing, we generally look at the project in terms of south parcels and north parcels. And you can think about building project phases that get built in over time by creating phases out of, out of the two sections of the project itself. And so we've provided three looks at what phasing in the project can look like. And again, we're, we're creating optionality in the project. We're not saying this is how this will in fact proceed. What we're saying is we're going to be nimble for, um, for how things progress this year in particular with approvals and what the grant picture looks like and adapt what development plan, uh, and what phased plan would, would work according to where the funding situation, um, lays out with this. So in looking at option one, here's a look at, like, kind of like a minimum phase that you could do for the project and then layer in additional build out over time or start with this phase. This is, you know, something that we're shooting for really is this is the, the general option to go forward with. So what that ultimately would look like, if we look at these buildings one through three and this amount of infrastructure and open space, is, um, 72,000 square feet of building in phase one. And this slide really conveys that 67,000 square feet of the 72,000 square feet is sort of spoken for in the sense of partnerships that have been developed with building occupiers that could activate the building, uh, on day one when it's built. That's 93% of total phase one that you can think to yourself have real occupiers, real tenants, real activity on the site, which I think, you know, if you're in the world of commercial real estate, commercial brokers or retail brokers, if you're pre-leasing or, you know, sort of arranging for almost 93% of the project being occupied right at the gate, it's a really, um, you know, it's something to be proud of, I would say. So next steps, we summarize a bit of next, of accomplishments in 2023. And 2024 really is to say full steam ahead on continuing with these council updates and community updates. One thing that we'd like to do is have more of, is hear more of the, uh, preferences and feedback from the council and the community for, you know, what right balance of building features and character, uh, you'd like to generally see. Um, we're going to finalize CEQA, schematic design and design development. This is where you really do start to spend real money and get project approvals to occur, which is something that we really want to accomplish this year. We're on track to doing it now. Pre-construction, meaning at every step of the way we do these milestone cost estimates and schedule updates. We have additional grant applications that are in the books now. I think combined out of two grant applications that are still pending, it could be nine million dollars of additional grant funds. So again, we're not giving up on anything. We're just continuing to try to, uh, continue to leverage the city's investment into additional grant opportunities and then develop MOUs with the anchor partners. So that is, uh, the update. Thank you for the attention. It's been nice, it's almost luxurious, right? With today's council meeting to have this amount of time to be able to present, uh, so I took advantage of it, but happy to, uh, hear any questions, uh, that are there in the community or, or amongst your folks.
All right. Questions, uh, from council members for the presenter? Anyone?
I don't question, I don't know if we have public comment. I have some comments to make about where we are.
All right. Any questions about the presentation? I have a couple. One, there was once upon a time a youth sport component here, a partner who was interested in, we don't need to go into detail about what it was, but it would have been a youth sports provider. And do I take it their no longer interest in the site or what, what could you tell us about what happened there?
Um, so essentially what happened there was, uh, it was just a matter of funding. So the youth sports complex, we, we're, we looked at things like anchor partners. We wanted to attach a really solid funding strategy associated with it. And so with that sports league, the funding wasn't there to support the new construction of their, of their facility. There was a little bit of a mismatch between what the expected, uh, cost of new construction for what they were trying, looking to do versus the amount of funds that were generally available. So I think that that strategy for, for that particular, uh, partner would be something more like acquisition of an existing building that is going to be cheaper than building new construction. So it was really funding.
Yeah, it's a real challenge for those youth sports organizations because most, as we know, most existing warehouses and buildings out there are not adaptable to this. They got pillars in the wrong spot. They don't have parking, all sorts of challenges. So this would have been an ideal sort of a setting, but if it doesn't pencil, it doesn't pencil. We did talk about partnerships with Folsom Lake College. You know, what would they be interested in doing on this site? How could this, uh, enhance their educational options for Rancho Cordovans? Is there any update on what that might be or what that might be?
Yeah, certainly. So, um, they, generally speaking with Folsom Lake College, they've talked a lot about how they've got general education facilities in the Rancho Cordova Center, and they're excited about the specialty facilities that Mills Crossing offers. The specialty facilities are places, for instance, that could support their arts program. Um, so we're certainly not going to, they, they're saying, you know, that we've got the Harris Center, so we do lots of performances there. However, um, arts, I mean, arts-based education could be great at your facility, not only thinking about using the art center and the rehearsal spaces, but also the idea would be, we could do Shakespeare in the Green. You know, we could do a summer, um, Shakespeare festival, you know, there. So that's one good example. They're really digging in on health, uh, healthcare-based workforce, uh, uh, training as well. So, um, the synergies that exist with the community health clinic and, um, and the ability to provide training opportunities in the field, training opportunities, and almost use the health clinic as a place to train the future workforce in partnership with Folsom Lake College is something that they're really excited about. Those are two really good opportunities and good examples of things that they're, you know, that they're leaning in heavily for. They're the future for workforce training and education for Folsom Lake College is really focused in those two, uh, areas. And, and, and that's just off the top of the head. They've rattled off several other ways that they could imagine, um, having a, a partnership.
And may I just add real quick to that, too? I think it's also the connection to Cordova High School's health education program and their CTE program there is, has been a part of the conversation is the pipeline and pathway of the students going through Cordova High to Folsom Lake to having access to these future jobs and training at the health clinic there.
Good. There's a commercial kitchen element, uh, element or what did you call it? Food row, something like that?
Yeah, so, yeah, both, one and the same.
Yeah, that, that structure is interesting. The concept's interesting. How much work have we done trying to figure out what does a commercial kitchen look like, like elsewhere? How does it function?
Yeah.
With regard to the public? Do we, do we have much work done on that front?
We do. So we've got another partnership with a, a local, uh, community development corporation that focuses on, uh, commu, commercial kitchen incubators. So we're not reinventing the wheel here. We're saying there are organizations that are active in the region that are experts in this. So we're, we've had conversations with them about what are your space needs? You know, when we enter needs assessment and, and space programming, we always interview the operators, tour existing facilities to say, what don't you like about this space? What do you wish you had in a new state-of-the-art space? And let's plug that into what we're generally designing. A lot of it really equates to storage. It's sort of, you know, like, a lot of times you might think you need a really, um, swank kitchen, but in a lot of ways, those are some of the easier things to really design to. A lot of it is just how does it circulate? What's the function? How much storage are you providing? So that's how we responded. But that space layout that we've designed to is really done in collaboration and response with partners that are, um, active in the, in the region and, and operating similar commercial kitchen incubators.
So I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, um, commercial kitchens typically or incubators for commercial kitchens would be located almost like in a warehouse area. Because if you're not publicly focused, if you're interested in manufacturing whatever it is you're going to manufacture in a kitchen, um, you don't need a public interface. But this particular one kind of demands, expects, needs that public interface because we want it to support everything else that might be happening there at night.
Yeah, certainly.
So that makes it, to my mind, an unusual commercial kitchen sort of a setup because the expectation is not just this is here so you can produce something and try to build a market and a company. This is also here so that you can serve the public.
And I don't think those are, those two things are pretty compatible with the model. If you're getting trained to be a food entrepreneur, you're going to be thinking about how do I develop multiple lines of business in my food business? So you might think to yourself, I'm going to develop a catering business that sort of functions on the wholesale market, so to speak, but I also need to know how to engage with the public. Um, the future of food entrepreneurship is going to be what is outdoor dining and what is indoor dining? And so it provides a pathway to be able to look more holistically at the different types of formats and modalities for, um, food delivery.
The other interesting thing about that is that, um, doing a food incubator has long been a goal of the chamber. And I've actually toured a couple of incubators with chamber staff in the past. And, and again, as, as Micah said, you know, we have such a strong link coming out of Cordova High with the culinary academy. American River right now, uh, according to the previous culinary teacher, has a, a really aggressive culinary program. But, um, but it's kind of an opportunity to give our kids coming out of school the ability to go forward and stay in that, in that field.
I think, um, in that space, when you look at the outdoor service area, we should take a pretty close look at where the sun is at different times of the day and year. Because it would appear that, like, the, the images that were shown were sort of a morning sun is my guess at that site, which is shaded by the building you're next to. But most of the uses we would be interested in having them there would be an afternoon, evening sun, which probably means full sun on that side of the building.
Hmm, interesting. Yeah, that's a good point.
Panera has that problem.
Okay, uh, if there's no other questions about the presentation, public comment?
Yes, we'll start with Helen Willen-Bachar. Following Helen will be Darryl Langwell.
Hi, I'm Helen Willen-Bachar. I've attended a lot of the meetings that they've had for this program, and I want to compliment you on all the activities that you had. But what I see as a major deterrent, and I was blindsided when I saw it, was the elimination of the parking structure. The reason being is, yes, it's cheaper to have, um, ground parking, however, vehicles are different sizes. That particular piece of land sits in neighborhoods that have parking issues. Without that parking structure, you're throwing more people into those neighborhoods that are already saturated with cars. That parking structure, many activities were talked about, and in particular, the upper portion could be used as a farmer's market, the upper deck. That would bring the people who come in a light rail not having to go up to Sunrise Boulevard to that, uh, farmer's market. The parking would also, uh, in this structure would also allow for, uh, make the neighborhood happy because you are building a structure to accommodate the 100 to 200 cars that are going to show up when you use those theaters. Other than that, they'd be on the street. The parking structure, upper portion we talked about, could be opened up for rental, used for, um, different events where they bring caterers in and they, they set up, um, tables and stuff in an open-air environment where it could be used and it could make some, some money on the rental of the upper portion. To me, taking that parking structure out is really the wrong thing. One thing I didn't hear and one thing I pushed in a lot of the meetings I've been to, the environmental issue and the energy renewal, where are the solar panels? When you start adding all these, uh, glass frontages, that's a lot of heat that's being put, um, put into that area. When you start showing these open-air rooms, that is a lot of noise. So what is being done to ensure that when these structures are, are built, we don't have to go back in and retool them because the noise level inside exceeds what the average person wants? There is a fancy to use to go to someplace initially, but what is the draw that that has to get people to want to come back? Once they get a negative im, uh, feeling about it, they're not going to come back. And they're the things I'm concerned about. Before we talked about putting, you talked about putting apartments near the college and taking away from the apartments that ever overlooked the neighborhood. Thank you.
Next speaker is Darryl.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Darryl Langwell Vineyards Neighborhood. It sounds like they have a couple anchors that are kind of committed to this project. How long are they willing to wait until they can move into this project?
That's all the public comment that we have.
You probably answered that second one pretty quickly.
Yeah. Um, the conversations that are happening with the anchor tenants, um, we share the schedule with, uh, with them. And so it's not bad to have a couple years. And so it's not bad to have a couple years of advance notice as to when these facilities would be coming online so they can work out their existing lease arrangements. So they, they've got leases that are expiring in the next two years, as a good example. So if this comes online in the next two, two and a half years, then that actually works out pretty well. So they're doing their own forward planning in, in a similar vein.
They're, basically, I translate, they're fully committed. We even have grant support to relocate some of them here.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We've got, I mean, some of them are like, we don't have a Plan B. So there's that. At the end, and I think the testament to that is that, that these partners have been involved and committed to this over the last couple of years. But if there isn't a facility to lease to them yet, right? So there's a little bit of that also. You kind of need to have legal buildings that have a temporary certificate of occupancy before you can even legally execute a lease, so.
Okay. And the first question was sort of requesting additional information about the parking garage, the loss of it, the impacts of it. I would just add to that comment. When we estimate how much parking we need for the site, if we no longer have in the parking garage, where are we assuming people will park?
Yeah, the, that's a good question. We, the parking, the amount of parking that's been provided is consistent with the parking studies that have estimated parking demand and, and a recommended number of spaces. So the, and I, I guess I should say that part of, we've made up some of the parking that was lost in the parking structure through a partnership and a ongoing conversation with Folsom Lake College. So the Phase III site of Folsom Lake College has now been shown on the site plan to add additional parking spaces. When you combine the amount of spaces on that surface lot with the additional lot at Folsom Lake College on-street parking, all of those gets you above 200 spaces, around 220 parking spaces. And with the three buildings slightly reduced in size, that is, when you, when we run it through the parking models, that's, you know, above the 180 parking spaces that they say you need. So we've still adequately supported the amount of spaces and, you know, we'll, we are very well aware of the parking challenges and we, we, we will keep working at it. You know, I think that we'll keep working at it in partnership with the city. There are no easy solutions to it, but we have thought it through.
And for a large outdoor event, there is parking at the light rail station across the street.
Right, so the parking models that we've looked at also factor in shared parking sharing. And the idea is that if you're gonna have a larger event, then they really start to pull in the broader parking ecosystem, not just on your one property, but sharing other spaces, understanding that that's not gonna be a daily demand. That's a peak demand that doesn't occur, it occurs, you know. I mean, hopefully it occurs often, right? You want it to have a robust, active area, but it's not like it happens every week type of thing.
The Folsom Lake College lots, a little longer walk, but still less than half a block, are quite large.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think it's continuing conversations. Parking's gonna be a little bit of an ongoing conversation. You don't wanna overpark it, you don't wanna underpark it. But there are different assets to think about as far as partnerships with the light rail station across the street and the parking lot there and the Folsom Lake parking that they're building out right now across the street.
And the shopping center that's maybe two blocks away, right?
There are, there are 325 spaces in the light, in the mill station lot.
That many, really, wow. So 200 on our side, 325 across the street.
Yeah. I did, something did occur to me, though, a question for Corin. Knowing, noticing that you designed the theater for 200, 300 seats. We know that there's 450 seats at the Performing Arts Center. And, you know, typically, most of us are just there for, for the music events, the symphony and, and, you know, that kind of thing. And they can fill up the room. But the question is whether, aside from the symphony there, is that too many seats?
300?
Yeah, you don't, you know, thinking about the, thinking about the item, the last item on our agenda and the fact that they're limiting their number of seats for some very specific reasons. But if we're, if we're thinking specifically theater as opposed to music or some other kind of performance, then the question is, are there, are there, are there that many groups that could fill up a 300-seat venue?
Right, that's a great question. So one, one way to answer that is, is that the, the theater design is flexible, meaning it can seat up to 300 depending upon the format. The idea is flexibility. So you've got this black box theater that's a box. You've got stadium seating that can be retractable. You can, and we've shown different formats for it where you can do a 100-seat event just as easily as you can do a max 300-seat event there. So I think the idea is flexibility is built into the different ways that you would lay out this open-air, well, not open-air, but an open-black box facility. And, and its size to hit a sweet spot that was really driven by the study of the inventory of competitive venues in the region. To say 300 seats is something that, there's a dearth of that size in the market so that if you do provide a 300-seat, it's sort of in the Goldilocks zone, right? Where there are a decent number of venues that are looking around for something that are 300-seat. They can't do 450, they can't do 500-seat. But the handful of venues that offer 200 seats don't provide as much space and capacity as what they might need.
Okay, so the only thing that I heard you say that causes me any concern is retractable seating? Because I'm always having to look out for accessible seating.
Yeah.
And retractable doesn't sound very accessible to me.
I understand that. Not all of the seating is retractable. So you'll have some seating that, that will not be like in a stadium, a stadium format.
Not like the gym.
Not like the gym, yeah. Not everything is a gym, but a piece of it is retractable and you combine that with other seating that's there to get you the, the full amount of the 300 seats.
And I think the, the term theater kind of might be a little misleading that there is a lot of different types of events that can happen there for the size of different, whether it's, you know, future state of the cities, different things from a, from an auditorium standpoint. But it's really, as Corin mentioned, it's the flexibility of the size and the uniqueness that it can be a theater, and a very nice theater. And I think that's the goal is to, you know, build it in a way that it's attractive to the theater community as well as, as far as a usable, functioning, you know, facility, but also being able to use it for other things. Because I think sometimes if you use it for too many other things, it becomes not good for anybody. But I think it's that kind of working through those different pieces to make sure it's the right kind of flexibility that makes sense for the different kinds of events.
What might be helpful, it's just a suggestion, and I can't remember if, maybe we were invited to do this and I couldn't go, but I know the Harris Center has a, has a black box theater as part of its complex and stuff. But perhaps doing some tours and visits of things that are similar to what we're thinking about. And I know there's a plan to do that at some point. There was a bus tour that, I can't remember exactly what we visited, but if that's, and that may have been even before we, we started down this path.
I think Corin and team were there at that black box earlier today.
At Harris, the one at Harris. So I, I just remember Brian King doing his, like, kickoff for the year there, and I got invited one of the years I was mayor. And I was in that room and, and even the way that they were describing how they could, how they could have set it up, the way that they had it set up was the most seating that you could in that room. But then they were showing, like, afterwards, kind of, you know, those seats can go all the way back against that wall in that way, and you could have this much more performance space or practice space or recital space or rehearsal and stuff. So maybe that, that would help, you know, as far as your familiarity with it. But yeah, there, there are examples of those, of these types of things around the region.
Well, the Performing Arts Center actually has a black box theater in it.
I just don't think it's ever been used for a production. It's just like the theater classroom is basically what it's used for.
Did we, when did we agree to get rid of the parking? Or are we still just talking about that?
Still talking about it.
Okay. Like, that's a terrible idea.
Get another parking garage?
Yeah, that will make that place miserable. So, so, but if, if you, hold on. If we get rid of that parking, the people in the condos and the people in the apartments take up all the other parking, and you try to have an event there, and we will flood that neighborhood, and that will be miserable. But let's, let's have a fair conversation. So then what are you gonna take off of the list instead? So their recommendation is that the parking can be, can, we, through accommodations of all of the parking that Folsom Lake College has and RT and the shopping center down the street, that that may be able to accommodate it. And we save that because we've had 7% increases in costs. So which one of the buildings you want to get rid of? I would just wait to build them. I wouldn't build them as fast. You don't have to build them all right now. The longer we wait, the more this is gonna cost. But also, what if costs finally go down? Then we're making a decision to, on thinking what we don't have than whether what we do have. But I'm gonna tell you right now, if we don't put any parking in there, oh my God. No, there's not, there's not, no parking. I know what's there. I've seen the flat parking. But if you don't have that parking garage, because one of the major pieces of the community was excited about was that they were gonna get off that damn street because that's a dangerous street. You know which one I'm talking about, where you make the right turn and there's absolutely no parking because the cars will go up and down the line. They wanted to get off that, and they were gonna be using this facility. And now we're just taking that away because there might be extra costs and things might take a long time. Well, by the end of this, with costs going up, we're probably only gonna have one building. I mean, it's a billion dollars to fill the facility. But I'm saying that that parking structure, even one or two, will alleviate some of the stress. And just the experience of driving in, going to the parking structure, walking to the event, is something people really like to do. If you're telling me that they're gonna park down the street, pass the college, and then buy the grocery store and walk, you're not, it's not the same activation of the space. Or park at the, the, the light rail station that's across the street and then walk across the street to a light rail when they could have had this facility in the middle. What you're gonna get is, I already know, there's condos and apartments. People are gonna fill out everything because everyone's gonna have two cars because we still haven't got to the point where we don't want them to have two cars. And they'll fill out all the parking that's available, and there'll be nothing there. Plus, I, I remember, think, the other thing was, I remember seeing something about daycare. Did we talk about that? Like, one of the facilities is made for daycare for the community? Do we still have that in there? I didn't hear about that when we were talking about that.
Yeah, so on the daycare side, we haven't, as we've looked at it, and we, we, we had some working groups with the city staff to look at partners within the area. There wasn't ever a specific daycare partner that was identified. And there's also specific code-related issues to providing a daycare center on-site. So when you factor in the code-related issues to getting a daycare center to work and, and whether or not that would be compatible or coexist with the rest of the project, it hasn't been something that has kind of bubbled up to the top as one of the best, most viable options there. It's not, I couldn't say we, you know, you, you, you sort of, you never say never, right? I mean, there's, you could always continue to look at that, but it hasn't emerged as, 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 as viable of options as the others.
Could you compare the number of spots in the garage versus what's being proposed now?
Yeah, so initially, we showed a 300-space garage. And when we ran our parking models, they, the, the, the result of that was, you know, you're overparking that facility. When we looked at the, the parking demand for the, the three buildings that are there, the numbers were coming out closer to 180 spaces, so.
So we have a, a play that has 300 seats possibly, right? So if half of that, that would be 150 people if we had one play. Not to mention that we could have this cooking facility that's also open next to it. There's another 50. How many condos do we have on the site, roughly?
About 45 or so.
So each of them has one to two cars, there's another 90. How many apartments?
They have, they all have two-car garages.
They all have two-car garages.
Okay, the apartment complexes?
Those are parked separately. So we showed the site plan for the, the, the housing to show that the housing parks itself. And then the townhouses also have two-car garages in them. So that's a, that's kind of like an additional 180 or so parking spaces that are just serving the residential alone.
But we're not gonna be able to pull the parking off that street now that would be in that group. And then that also got rid of my basketball court, right? That was supposed to be on the top of it?
I think so.
What was the most important thing to me?
There is still a roof.
There wasn't any basketball court on that.
You've got basketball at the, at the youth center.
Youth center. That's not outside hot basketball, listen, they were supposed to be on-the-roof basketball. I've lost my, now, my parking structure. I'm very concerned about the daycare thing because I thought that was a cool piece that was gonna facilitate.
There is daycare at the first intersection going down into the meadows on the Loma.
I know, but they're full. That's why we wanted more. Because this was one of those things, like, I, I wanna make sure that we're not looking just for tenant partners, which I do appreciate, but we're also looking for the facilities that the community on that side of Ranch Cordova is looking for. Health, health and wellness is huge, but daycare is right up there with health and wellness. Parking to help out the community that's at a hole.
Not, not to disagree, but after having heard the school district several times in the last month, I have a sneaky feeling that the state of California is pretty much killing private daycare. Between TK, pre-K, kindergarten, and kids being able to stay at school the entire day, nobody, that's all free, and nobody can afford daycare costs anymore.
I, I don't know. Goddard seems to be doing pretty well with building their, their new facility and somebody went into their old one, but.
Well, they are, but you of all people used to talk about how much money you were spending on daycare.
I was, I was. I will say that the, the bigger struggle right now is the amounts of daycare that we were providing to people that were commuting here to work and were doing site-based, like, the facility-based ones or home-based ones in this area that were the daycare providers for people that worked here that don't go to work anymore. And so the infrastructure for a lot of the, the site-based ones that are on Sunrise and over in this area, I think are really struggling to find enough kids. So I have less concern about that. The, the parking I, I get, and if this project gets going, you know, first and we can build these buildings and we can prove that, that we need more parking, then solutions can be had. But, but I also look at it and I think of the amount of surrounding parking that, I mean, what did the, what did the, the parking structure cost roughly? Like, how much are we saving by not doing that?
You're saving, so we looked at, with a 300-space garage, it was about, just the construction costs alone, it was about $72,000 a space. And then.
It's too late for me to do math.
Yeah, I know.
Four million? 20 million?
22 million.
Okay, so let, let's just say, let's say 20 million. So we could perhaps solve this issue in the short term, get these facilities for the community to use. And I'll, I'll talk about the tenant spaces in a minute. But with maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in police and traffic control, in ensuring that people can get to these other ones across the street to RT, across the street to Folsom Lake College or down the street. And also, I, just coming back from a handful of conferences where micro-transit was everywhere. Somebody that's parking down by Viva and then taking a scooter to this place, and then we put the scooter back at the end of the day, back to wherever that was. Like, there are solutions to this that could equate to a $20 million hit to this project. And maybe someday we do solve for it, and we do have enough for it after revenue neutrality's been around for 10 years or something like that, that we decide that we have the demand for it. But to say that we're gonna wait on this project for another five years because we wanna make sure it has more parking than, than the plan says we need is not something I'm for. And so, no, I, I, I just wanna say, one, thank you. When we bought this land, and I remember even talking to my former colleague, that, and this was before, I don't think he was on council, or he, I think he passed before we bought this land. But I remember him kind of counseling me when I was early on in my time here at, at the council that, look at what Citrus Heights did, that they saved all of the money and they built their community facility without borrowing a dime. And if you look at the size and what we're talking about on this space that's gonna have multifamily housing, is going to have homeownership housing here, that we're bringing in an anchor tenant corporation that's going to bring high-paying jobs to Folsom Boulevard in the, right? Like, like, these are the things that dreams are made of when we were talking about even buying this land, that you're going to have people with disposable income coming to Ranch Cordova, to Folsom Boulevard and working all day, looking for places to buy their lunch, to buy their breakfast, maybe stay for dinner, to go to a show. Like, like, and we're talking, you know, almost 100,000 square feet of space. When you look at West Sackett, 20,000, Citrus Heights at 30, or 25,000 or 30,000 square feet, Elk Grove in the 30,000, we're talking almost 100,000 square feet on Folsom Boulevard. Like, in the 12 years that I've been doing this kind of work, this is the kinds of things that we dreamed of someday getting a project like this. And I'll be damned to say that it doesn't, it doesn't happen because we might not have enough parking when we start. So when I look at this, I am thrilled that, you know, we talk about the clinic and the opportunities there of doctors and nurses with degrees showing up. And again, the disposable income that could come into, to Folsom Boulevard for that. But the, the workforce development side of that and the fact that we could have nursing students.
And the fact that we could have nursing students and X-ray students working in Ranch Cordova. Right? And then hoping to, you know, land a job at Kaiser or something else. I mean, this is phenomenal. And so. You know, we can sit here and poke holes at, you know, we should have had that, or this thing was really important to me, or this one thing. We're still a long ways from this project being done. We've engaged a bunch of different partners. Some of them have changed since the very beginning. Some of them that that had hoped to be a part of this project are now a part of this project, and they weren't a couple of years ago, because they didn't understand what this project was gonna be about. So to your point and your question around youth sports, th- there are a lot of potential tenants and partners. That really didn't understand what we were asking for when it started, and their proposal reflected that. One of them that didn't think that they had to pay any rent. Right? And then felt really bad that they put in a proposal that that didn't pay rent, because they would have paid rent. Um, and now they're talking about paying rent and and being one of the partners. So. I just wanna say thank you, because from the RFP, the the, you know, when we sat in that other room and tried to figure out who we were gonna pick to do this. I still didn't really think it would ever get this big. Um, and some of the partners that you're working with that are part of the development team that have made. Long-term commitments to this, and I'm not gonna name names or what it is, but the fact that we're talking about. Espe- to me, especially the stuff that's paying for itself. Bringing those jobs to that part of town, those kinds of jobs to that part of town. I I don't think I ever envisioned that happening until you started showing us what what you were designing and putting together. Um, and as far as I know, and this may still be true. Um, if we get new market tax credits in this, I think that's still the first one in this county. Since the program started, or or maybe, maybe they've had a few, but I know I've served on. Well, now, three different development corporations trying to land new market tax credits in this region and in in Northern California, and they've all failed. So this will be one of the first ones that I've ever heard of in this town. And I were, and I, ten years ago, actually. Next month, it'll be ten years, since I left an employer that actually had their own new market tax credit allocation, and I couldn't find a project in Sacramento to fund. That was ten years ago, so things have changed. Um, but the the fact that we're we're landing that in Ranch Cordova, I think is really, really exciting. And I think. Hats off to the development team and everybody that's put this stuff together. Is it perfect? No. Are we at the end? No. There's still plenty of time to have other conversations. If construction costs come down, maybe we can do the parking garage. But in the meantime. I think the issues that are being raised about crossing a street or, you know, crossing Folsom Boulevard or crossing the side street there. We also own a bunch of land next to the Folsom Lake College uh, parking area that that we could look at too. And I think. Human traffic control and other things like that to the tunes of hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. In and and realizing a twenty million dollar savings in the project, so that we can get this project in. Three or four or five years instead of waiting ten years is absolutely worth it.
So, so today, we're talking about like, um, you also asked, I like the idea of angles that we talked about. And a structure not looking flat on some of the other pieces. And making it a statement piece for the city of Rancho, because we've never had this before. So that's really important. I know that might cost a little bit more money. But of course, we do have other funds and availability to be able to facilitate that. And then let's say we, you know, as you're taking all this device, would you be coming back in like six months, November? December kind of timeframe for another talk? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, so um, couple, couple points on that. We, we would like to um. Have more of an update in the June type of timeframe earlier than that. Because we're basically wanting to have updates associated with major design milestones. So we're underway with schematic design right now, and when schematic design is coming to a close. That's still an opportunity for us to talk about, you know, where we are with the project, to start getting. And pulling out more of the preferences, saying, you know, here are some things that we can still influence with the project, especially with respect to the facade, the design. How much glass, all those kinds of things, what the roof lines look like. So it's really good to be able to do that in a, in a May-June type of timeframe. Um, we also then per- would proceed into design development. That's kind of like the next major stage of the project. And getting through design development would be the kind of second half of the year. Where we could be back in September, October, November type of timeframe with more substantive updates uh, uh, then also. We also, um, you know, community outreach for the year includes putting together another workshop like this, like at the end of schematic design. And also being a part of the pop-up events that the city has. So uh, being out in the community also throughout the year. So yeah, we do expect to be back a couple of times this year, staged at different phases. Um, and then, yeah, I think the other uh, phases of design, and I think the other point on the parking, it's just, it's a good point, right? Like, we strive to make everyone happy, right? To the extent that we can. Um, but, so. You, we could, for parking, you can say, here's the cost of the project with surface parking. Here's the cost of the project with the parking structure, and, you know, it it it's sort of. Um, at the end of the day, it's, it it's kind of like, what, what do you wanna support, right? And so it it's not, it, that that I think is the way, the way that we would frame that, is that when we looked at it. It just seemed like it's a much bigger cost than than what. Would be prudent for the project and what I think the target investment is for it. And so that's why we, why we, why we addressed it that way, understanding that you could phase it in also.
Yeah, and there's, and there's, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of changes coming up, you know, uh, around the community. So, you know, who knows what it's gonna look like at the end of the design. Maybe, maybe we'll just have the parking structure in one or two buildings as we do it. You know, we don't really know. But um, I I'm not really a fan of the cu- uh, the metal kind of feel to it, but I am a fan of the uh. Movie thing, because that's very, that's sexy. And I really liked before where you had the circles in the middle. Um, when you first did the design, you kind of had the meeting area, that kind of had a lot of circles in it, then that that thing. To do the farmer's market and the get-together. So I'd love to see that, you know, that's, that's some of my preferences. And then, um, of course, you know how I feel about the basketball court, which now is not there. Um, the only reason we have is for basketball court. But um, how you do that to me?
Have a youth center down the street.
Yeah, it has basketball outside. This was gonna be basketball on a roof, which was gonna be fire. And the only one in the community, yeah, it was gonna be basketball on top of the parking structure, was one whole thing was for my, for the basketball court. Whole community needed, but you know.
There might still be room, who knows?
This is the danger of really cool renderings early on, and then somebody gloms on to, that's what it's gonna be.
We're always giving ideas. I'm just, I'm just trying to put across how important basketball is to me. Um, just putting out there, theaters are great, but basketball. Um, also, um, I've seen a lot and and I I, of course, the renderings are, you know, I worked for architecture firms, so it's very new. Um, introduction of plants on on walls and landscaping, always very attractive.
That's attractive, yes.
Yeah, if we can find a way to actually do that with the way that our city is kind of built, and then a whole bunch of, what's our new flower? A whole bunch of baby blue eyes up and down, just hinting, really, really attractive.
Taking notes.
Taking notes. And then I know we talked about, is the college going to put some sort of housing for their kids? Possibly on our, on their facility piece, or are they not gonna do that anymore? Anyone know?
I I don't think there was a conversation about Folsom Lake doing housing. I think there are sometimes opportunities to do other grants and things for the multifamily. And so we'll still pursue those opportunities as they come. But obviously, the state budget has uh, maybe put some um, restrictions.
What are we now, a hundred gazillion dollars in the rear or?
I think it's thirty-seven or seventy-two, depending on who you're talking to.
That's amazing.
That was the story.
Is that billion or trillion or? Dial it right in Google Play.
Yeah, and I, and I think the first proposal's get, get it down to about seventeen billion. Um, I think that. Yeah, and I think that the the conversation that we had around student housing was in the multifamily, if there was a way to have a set aside for students.
Right.
Or if there was a way to incorporate um, transitional housing for emancipated youth. From foster care. I think were the two conversations that.
Yeah, we we will continue to pursue those conversations with Folsom Lake as far as, because there are student.
Those are the two subjects that we had talked about in the multifamily affordable, was a set aside for. Students of Folsom Lake and emancipated minors from the, from the community campus.
Oh, and there's a discussion about artist housing as well, but I'm not sure.
I think we threw that into, yeah. But again, it's, a lot of that's conceptual and.
Right.
Can you get the voucher? Can you get the grant that goes with that kind of person for this thing? And I mean, i- it it's why we have fifty units of of transitional housing at Veterans Village. Because they still give grant, or you know, vouchers for that.
And just so you guys know, um, with uh, um, daycare, um, there's roughly somewhere around thirty-five thousand kids. That need daycare as of right now and are looking for spots. I talked to Kahim Morton, he's the one that runs it for the state of California, up and down the coast. And he's looking for spaces. And so there's, right now, I think there's something like seven thousand kids that need daycare in the city of Ranch Cordova. Affordable daycare in the city of Ranch Cordova. So if this could be a place to actually do it, if you'd like, I can put you in touch with, I think you know Kahim. You know Kahim?
I don't think so.
I'd love to put you in touch with them for the daycare site, because they would love to come alongside us and offer, especially for city people in Ranch Cordova. It's not as much finding uh, daycare, it's finding affordable daycare. And they would love to come alongside us, especially since we're gonna have a health center there. I would love to, I love the idea when we were building this to activate the space. Twenty-four seven, so it's like, the kids are there in the morning, they're dropped off, we have the seniors coming in. The college kids get to get it at the end, and then there's a party at the end of the day with all the events that are going on. So if we can do that kind of thing, because I really wanna be, I really want the community to see is like, this is theirs, and these are all kind of cool features that could be there.
So I generally loathe when this council has to comment on design issues, colors, garage doors, et cetera.
I didn't do that.
It's very painful. Um, but I I do think whatever we build here is gonna set sort of an architectural theme. For this Mills District. And the only other building we know that's gonna be there a long time is Mill Station across the street. Now. Within my artistic ability, I can't imagine how you would mimic that in a new modern building that we want to be a showplace. So perhaps you just don't, you just set that aside. But someone ought to think about that a little bit, right? And and what sort of placemaking do we want with this facility? Because I would think you'd want it to be. You know, like architecturally significant, or sort of a wow structure, something that surprises people a little bit. But also something that has versatility. So I'll give you an example. Um, when I was in Switzerland, they were doing an outdoor, I don't even know how to describe it, an outdoor video festival. So you can imagine, they've got a lot of three-story buildings down in the old part of the city, and they had projectors set up. In like a little box projector, throwing things up on these big walls. And there was art, there were movies, there's all interactive stuff. It was phenomenal as a festival. But it sort of reminded me of what you can do with just a little bit of pre-planning about the infrastructure. So you showed the video here on that wall. But, you know, you might want materials that are suitable for that on multiple walls, if you're doing, say, a Christmas event. And then suddenly, the people who are arriving to the event see all this imagery instead of just that one video wall where we might show a movie. Um, or you might have like LED lighting on the building that can change colors. I mean, that that sort of stuff is what I'd love to think about.
Certainly, yeah, when the, certainly on the LED lighting that can change colors, that's something that. I I mean, I think all those comments are good and fair game. Those are all part of the general conversation. Um, the lighting on the different buildings is also something that has a lot of impact. Um, and um, and it's not. Um, it's not an exorbitant, at an exorbitant cost. So when we try to think about sort of. Our our ethos is, we know that we're helping the city. How to playing a little bit of a role as your development arm, playing a fiduciary, putting a fiduciary lens to this to say, what are the. High-impact ways that are also affordable and just a general, you know, sort of optimal way to spend public investment. That's a really good idea that has a lot of merit. So, I mean, I I think this kind of ideation's really helpful.
So architecture is always so subjective. And um, I mean, it goes without saying, but um, number one, thank you, but Mill Station was not a handsome piece of architecture. When it was built, so um, we would not want to, we would not want to to imitate that.
Practical.
It, um, yeah, there's, there's several, um, there's several buildings in the Delta that look very similar to that. But um, you always have a, um, you always have this concern about what is architecture that's um. Going to feel modern, but it's not going to date itself over just a short period of time. Like. But we don't want this to look dated in ten years. And the best example of that is um, comparing. The way the Rayleigh Center looks, which was typical, regional, sort of almost Spanish. Eclectic architecture to the construction across the street at McDonald's and Dutch Bros and whatnot. Um, that architecture is a cla- classic example of what's really popular right now. And it, while I I appreciate, it's, one of you said you didn't really like the metal, okay? But if you look at what's being built over there by McDonald's, there's a lot of use of natural material. It looks like natural materials, but it isn't really. It's probably, it's probably metal. And um. Um, and these buildings remind me a lot of the the McDonald's. Uh, I'm gonna call it the McDonald's Center, because that's, I think that's about the only thing open in there any, right now.
Dutch Brothers and that.
Yeah, and Dutch Bros is probably blue. But um, so, you know, we really, that, it's. It is a challenge to figure out what is architecture that is gonna look, that's gonna look modern and current.
Yes.
And not get old in ten or twelve years.
Hundred percent.
Last comment I've got is, I noticed on the plan, there was some grass. I'm not sure state law is gonna allow a city to own grass anymore. Might have to make it all rock, something really hot and environmentally unfriendly. That's really going the wrong way.
We do have neighborhood, neighborhood greens and things that we term, and those are still allowed to be neighborhood greens. Yeah, so they're public.
The first interpretation was not ablative grass, it'll be owned by a city. So that was maybe an overreach.
Yeah, I'm sure that would, the parks and the different public spaces might not survive.
Imagine a park with no grass.
Uh, don't, don't laugh.
I know.
Hummingbird, Hummingbird Park has a um. Significant component of prickly pant, plants.
Great play, place to learn how to play catch. Okay, um, the other comment I had was in one of the drawings on the food building, I forgot, is that building three? C, whatever it was. There's just like this little dotted line saying um, veterans. And I think when most of us were thinking about, you know, what would be included in this site. We had more of an idea of, you know, maybe on a second floor somewhere, there'd be a row of offices, right? And there'd be like a, a Ranch Cordova Arts Council, would it be in one of them, and I don't know, some other. Group, volunteer nonprofit group would be another one, and the veterans would have one. That's not in this plan, basically. So I don't know if that corner actually represents sort of the best we could do.
Okay.
Vis a vis the veterans. I think, you know, one discussion we we've had since then is, would they be better off in uh, closer to the VA? You know, is there another facility somewhere that could accomplish more of what they want than this?
Rebuilding, rebuilding uh, wing headquarters.
Oh, yeah, I love that idea.
And and that's what would go there. It would be a veterans' center. But I will say, um, if you go check out just uh, District fifty-six in Elk Grove. Their main community center building has a veterans lounge, and it's just one end of. Their their community center is just a really long uh, broad building, kind of like, kind of like the one in Citrus Heights. But just one end of it, you walk in sort of over here, and this end over here is simply a veterans lounge. And um, the only thing that separates it from the rest of the building is glass. So.
Yeah, I think we should talk with those, with those organizations.
District fifty-six in Elk Grove.
I think we should talk with those organizations further about what their needs are. Um, before we do something like dotted lines on that plan.
And and I do think just, you know, kind of addressing that, the community building, there's options for mezzanines or things and things with that building that we can continue to look at. For those different opportunities, but I think it's just a matter of, you know, what does all that mean from a cost standpoint? Because those aren't necessarily. Um, you know, those are community benefit type of things, which is great, but we just have to make that in the overall cost assumption.
So if you added a second story to that building, then maybe what I just described could fit in there, but of course.
More the vision, I think, that's what you were thinking.
There's a cost.
Linda, you've done this before, so take me through this. Linda, you've done this before, so take me through this, because it'll be our first, my first building, getting this to the point. So are we going to see, when do we actually get to say like, we like this, we don't like that? Because right now it's blocks everyone told me not to do. When is it just like, it's like blocks, and they're like, don't look at the blocks?
If you go back to Karen's slide about the the schedule, he's actually got um design development happening this year. And that's, that's what would flesh out.
That fleshes a lot of that out, yeah.
That's when you do that.
When you, when design development is really the heavy on picking out what you like, what you don't like.
Yeah. But if you look at where we've come from, where there were nothing but the big green boxes, you know, I mean, I as I, as I told him, I thoroughly enjoy the Performing Arts Center with that kind of glass facade gallery coming out away from the building.
I like the thing at the top.
And space underneath it.
That'd be really cool. Could you imagine, like, you walk up and you see like a party going on in Rancho Cordova at the glass, and then up on the top where the basketball courts are? Yep, I like it.
I think the exciting thing is, you look at this, and and like you said, ninety-three percent of this is planned, almost. Like, like, you're in, in the food building, you're going to need to figure out who are the tenants and who are going to operate in there.
Right.
And that's really the building that's still up in the air as far as design, but like, you've got a corporate and a clinic space, you've got a performing arts center that it's pretty much planned, and then it's, what else can you fit in the other one? But a lot of it is also, who else wants to pay rent there? Right? And help fund that. And the more that we have rent there, the more things we might be able to do, right? Or or we sink that into the general fund here forever, right? So I, which.
I like the idea of like, especially like talking with some, uh, you know, those groups that do certain things. Like, I know the daycare place would love a spot in Rancho Cordova, but then I also know we promised the VA a spot, but now I'm like Donald's idea. Like, sometimes that's just not the right spot. This is not going to be everything to everybody. This is not going to be our last building that we ever build. So it makes more sense, it makes more sense to do it at Batman's facility.
Right, well, well, even even when a handful of the veterans came here and and asked for space, and we said, you know, yes, in in the interim, there may be space that we can have there to dedicate at some point.
Right.
And then repurpose it because we probably can find you somewhere better than that. Like, I mean, why wouldn't you want to put something like that next to the VA hospital where most of the veterans are going to anyways?
Yeah, we need a VA hall over there, that we could put all that cool facilities that we lose.
Right, and not to mention all of the housing that we put over there for veterans too, right? So this is not the logical place for that, but it's where the new thing is going at some point, and that's, that's a a a space that we can utilize. But I don't think any of us said that, like, we were going to put a VFW there, like, that that's not the logical place for it.
No, just a place for them to meet to start, while we decide on what's going to go there next. And so we, I mean, I I like building up Batman's Hall. Wayne, you know, Wayne, Batman, it was killing it. That joke was, that joke killed.
There, there's even space in the building in which we sit, potentially.
Oh, yeah, up here. We're good.
Whoa, you're on TV still.
All right, anything else on this item? Thank you guys for a lot of really great work, really great work. All right, that is going to take us onto our next item, which is twelve point two. If the clerk would like to read that item.
The subject for twelve point two, a resolution for a forgivable loan agreement between the city of Rancho Cordova and Phoenix Production Company. Doing business is Rise Up Theater Company for the construction of tenant improvements and lease payments for a ninety-nine-seat multi-use performing arts facility.
Excellent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Amanda Norton, the Economic Development Manager here for the city. And as Persephone goes ahead and pulls up the slide deck, we will be discussing a forgivable loan with Phoenix Production Company. A little background uh for this project, you may have recalled back in the first quarter of twenty-twenty-one. Uh, Rise Up did, and I'm just going to use Rise Up continually throughout this to make it clean and easy for everybody. Um, did submit for a community enhancement grant. Um, initially, they were not included in the original projects that were to be funded. And then once some additional higher revenues um did come in that year through our um community enhancement fund, um, there's an opportunity for Rise Up to be awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. But that was going to be used once a viable theater location was located. Um, to date, that initial hundred and fifty thousand dollars has not been spent or allocated. Uh, while that was working, then on, we had a city council budget work session in May. And at that point in time, Rise Up Theater did present two options for a potential theater space. One option would allow a five-year, sixty-five-month commitment from the city. Versus the option B would have been, they would have applied for the initial year with the understanding that they would have applied for funding from every year thereafter. Um, after that meeting, it was, um, council did ask us to explore the option of a five-year um agreement here with Rise Up Theater to the tune of one million nine hundred and thirty-four thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars. That would be used for a ninety-nine-seat multi-use performing arts facility. And those funds would be used exclusively for lease payments, um, funds for the construction of the tenant improvements, and any funds for production and technical costs like seating, lighting, um, anything that's really involved in the entire production of a theater. Uh, a box office, et cetera. Um, so in that um time period, Rise Up has been exploring spaces here in Rancho Cordova and did locate a space at one-one-zero-eight-eight Olson Drive. Where that is located is it is on Olson Drive in between Fiesta Philippines and the Ukrainian Federal Credit Union. You'll have the post office, which is located just to the north, and Golden One Credit Union, which is located just across the street. So it's in that shopping center that's there. Um, and how this loan uh would be put together, it's a forgivable loan, which means that the funds would be dispersed as construction expenses were incurred. And then for the other um sixty-five months, you would have the lease payments in advance every quarter. So they would get those three months and then be advanced for the next quarter and so on, just so that way they're not billing us monthly for those. The idea would be that this loan would be forgiven over the period of five years, so every year there would be a percentage that would be forgiven. And how this loan would be secured is by three documents. Um, one is a construction promissory note. The construction portion is the largest portion of this agreement. And that would be in the amount of one million one hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars. The rent payment promissory note, this is the one that would go along for five years, would be in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. And then there would always be a security agreement and fixture filing. And what that is, is a document that is uh recorded against the property. And what that allows is what's called a UCC one filing, and which means that anything in terms of accounts, inventory, lighting, seats, instruments, whatever things are purchased um to enable this theater to get up and running, the city would have the ability to recoup any and all of those if for some reason this business failed to remain in that space for over five years. And that's the main security against this particular loan. And. It's a security agreement and fixture filing. So what that does is when they purchase lighting equipment, the city then would be able to submit a UCC, what's called UCC filing against that. So that if um they go bankrupt or pull out of the space, then the city would have the access to go in and retrieve that equipment out of the space. Because otherwise we can't just re- retrieve equipment, that would be stealing. So this is the.
Or use the equipment.
Yeah, so I should, maybe I'll interject a little bit of big picture thinking here, just for anybody who's watching this. The goal, like the big goal, was how do we get live theater in Rancho Cordova? Um, we have some theater groups that have started out and tried to use park district facilities, you know, very challenging. We have another group that's using CAP uh theaters space. Is that called Green Mountain? Green Valley. And Hummingbird Theater is the one that was trying to use public space. So we've got these, these theater entities, but the goal is, you know, make a nightlife in Rancho Cordova that's theater-based. So the the project here, these guys are unique because they're sort of professional troupe. And this is, to me, feels like what we did to get the Beryl District off the ground, right? You facilitate something happening, it wouldn't otherwise happen, but if it fails, you've got a level of security. And so that's what you were describing there is the level of security.
Yes, I was. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In exchange for this, because there's always a change, um, there would be the items that Rise Up Theater would be responsible for doing. Um, they shall produce six theater productions, they would provide acting classes for both youth and adults. Um, they would also provide the facility, uh, much to what the mayor was just discussing, for other performing arts groups, dance groups, theatrical groups. With the understanding that they shall always pro- provide a prefer, a preference to at a discounted rate for any local Rancho Cordova groups that are interested in using the facility. Uh, Rise Up Theater would be entirely responsible for all facility management, and would put together, of course, the um calendar of events for the year. Uh, we would not be responsible, excuse me, the city would not be responsible for any cost for any of the productions. And then in terms of the construction costs, they would manage, we'd send the money to Rise Up Theater, and they would be responsible for making sure that the rent is paid and all other contractors are paid for this entire project. They would, of course, do reporting out for us every year in terms of um outcomes and community benefits. Um, I will say that um the CEO, Courtney Cochrane, is also in the audience, so if you have any other additional questions, I will um also allow her to come up to the podium. And if she has um that. So really, before you this evening, um, we are looking for you to review and discuss the term of the forgivable loan agreement. And there is a resolution, um, I would like to put into the record, um, I did note that in the last whereas it references that there's a security agreement and fixture filing. However, the um construction promissory note and rent payment promissory note need to be added into that last whereas if this resolution is um approved. So I need to make sure that that's in the record for the case of it.
Courtney, you want to come up? Because I'm sure there will be a couple of questions, and you're most likely the person to answer them. The first question I would ask is, how would you time share or partner with, say, Hummingbird? It could be anybody local in this space. How would that, how would you envision that working out?
So it all works around rehearsal schedules, right? Um, for us, for example, we would be rehearsing three, four days a week, so that leaves additional time for other groups. It depends on your time slots. If you're doing children's theater, it tends to be around three o'clock to six o'clock. Adult theater, seven o'clock to ten o'clock. Um, shows tend to run on weekends, and they run on, uh, for us, we'll be doing twelve shows over three weekends. So that means for three weekends, we'll be running a show while another company is rehearsing their productions. So it's just an um alternating schedule, and then I know there's groups like orchestras and concert bands that rehearse on Tuesdays and and Mondays on separate days. And um, there's an attached rehearsal space that can be utilized for items like that while we are working on theatrical productions in the other spaces.
But they can be in like your audience space and do a symphony practice?
No, it's a completely separate space. So there's three units that are in this one, um, in the one section of the building.
Three bays.
Yes, three bays, yes. So there's one area that has uh soundproofing against Fiesta restaurants, so they don't hear, apologize, they don't hear loud noises. And then it's a wall separation into the theater space. And then where the other separation would be is where like the stage is in the backstage of the Performing Arts Center.
Okay, so the contract doesn't it doesn't require you as the operator to let somebody else in, just give them access at a reduced rate, is that?
Uh, yes, correct.
Is that an understanding?
It is in our business plan, that that is what we are doing as a company.
Okay.
Um, you'll see with a lot of community theater groups that they have to turn and burn content very fast in order to stay afloat.
Right.
And we don't want to do that because it jeopardizes the quality of your productions that you're putting on. So it benefits us to also support the other arts groups locally because we aren't, we aren't faced with the necessity to have to do that.
You're, we talked about this before, your business model is different from a community theater group.
Yes, that is also touching on the ninety-nine-seat um venue, is that we are on track to be a union professional group. And we need to have ninety-nine seats in order to stay within the union pay rate that we need. If it goes over that, then you have to start paying people that aren't even physically there in your building.
Is that what Green Valley is?
No.
Their community?
Yes.
Okay. Just so we understand all the players here. So um, a question for you, is there a requirement that they partner to produce a given number of shows, six for them? Is there a requirement that they also let it out for six others?
That is not currently in the agreement.
Is that sort of an agreement possible, do you think?
Uh, I don't see why, it wouldn't be possible. It's already in the plans and the intention.
It's in your, it's in your plan to do it. So if we, if we wrote that in somehow, um, I guess the only other variable would be whatever you're charging, because you're anticipating revenue from those partners. And if the partners can't afford it, that that's a tough place to be in, right?
Especially since the partners are the ones that paid for them to actually develop their property and are paying the rent, if they live in Rancho Cordova.
Oh, they're Rancho Cordova, you're Rancho Cordova in there, right?
Yes.
I have a question.
Of course.
Uh, so is Kurt still working with you guys?
No.
Who has experience developing property?
Uh, uh, our construction team member, she's um, uh, Terry, I don't remember her last name. Um, on our actual board, we don't have anybody who has physically done that.
Okay, why do you think that location is the best?
We were given examples, and uh, we were, we had the opportunity to look about eight places, and this one suited it the best. It was close to restaurants and freeway access. Um, probably the only downside of the facility is the height of the ceiling, but that's not something that.
The facility itself has started to get walled in, parking-wise, the facilities around it are starting to gate up. I don't know if you've seen that yet, but I don't know if that.
The the large office next door, is that gated?
So uh, the church is starting to gate up, the other, and the church, like, if you drive in there now, you can't get around because you have to go out into the thing and go cross traffic.
The post office would be the other over.
Right, and so now it's, that's, it's all starting to wall itself in, and it's not as friendly to have a a theater arts, and you know, it'd be great is if we had it nearer to where we're putting our eventual theater arts on Folsom Boulevard, just putting it out there. And then um, having someone that has experience in negotiating this stuff with um uh, facilities concerns me a little bit, just want to put it out there, especially for, this is your first one, and cost overrun and a lot of stuff. Because once we come to this, it's, it, the city basically bites on whatever extra they're going to have to pay. And so if they go over the two million, which at this point with the way the world is working, it's now twenty million um, from the two million we thought it was originally, um, what is our, what is our appetite? Because I think Donald said it best, when we buy a building, we're we're buying it for life, so we're going to have to facilitate feeding this building.
We're not buying this building.
Well, once we renovate it, we're responsible for the rent, like, if we didn't hit it for the two million, we'd have to.
Or to to your point, this is an interim site until the community center is built.
Right.
And they permanently move all of these operators there.
Correct.
It only costs us two million bucks over five years.
Or this one operates even after our community facility is open, because it's slightly different business model. That would be my dream.
Ideal.
Right, because then you'd have like, you know, three different venues for live theater.
But I think your example, I just want to make sure, because you you invoke my name as as the reference to what you're trying to describe, that for one point nine million dollars, we have a five-year operating agreement for a place for, for performing arts. And at some point, five years from now, the city can make a decision as to what they want to continue to do. We don't own this, they don't own it, they're leasing it, and we can decide later. And and all of the equipment that's been purchased, we could decide if that gets repurposed somewhere else, or again, if this is thriving, then maybe you decide to do something. Maybe it can afford to pay for itself at some point, I don't know.
And if it fails, it's a little bit like um the brewery, right, that failed, not because of their own fault, because of outside influence. But the brewery equipment was still there and was immediately used by another brewer. So I feel a little bit like, if for whatever happened.
More than one brewer since.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that even furthers my point.
The three breweries that went in there.
Because if something went wrong with you guys, God forbid, someone else would look at that space, we'd probably market it as, hey, who's interested in this, right? It's set up. So Micah, in the construction thing that Garrett raised, which I think has some validity, is, does the city have a partnership role here, an oversight role, anything to help them build?
So I would say not specifically, I think we have a dollar amount that that we've seen their construction numbers, and we've evaluated some of their TIs and and. and we've evaluated some of their TIs and had them propose the different construction numbers. And this is a, being proposed as a max, you know, amount. But as, as you know, sometimes construction costs are different than what expected once you get into the building of the different TIs and different projects. And from our perspective, that would be on Rise Up's, you know, kind of agenda to figure out unless, you know, there's a different approach, you know, at the time. But the contract is built from a, this is a one-time max, you know, kind of contract amount.
Well, they just really need a construction manager, that's all.
I really would like to see some hard costs or pricing, if at all possible, for my future people that are donating into this. So like, you know, the Symphony Group wants a home. They need a place to play and practice. If we could get something in there that says that we're going to keep it low so that we can have more arts. Or Hummingbird Theater, hey, you're going to come in at this, or maybe it's a portion of whatever they bring in at the box office.
You want to be sure it's affordable?
I want to make it affordable. Because if we're going to donate and build this, this is the first one we've ever done, the best way is to have access to the entire community to use this, so across the board. So Rise Up Theater, Hummingbird Theater, the, the local orchestra place. But something that makes it not overly pricey, because technically, we're paying the rent for this. So are we paying, and we're paying the utilities too, right? Or just the rent?
Just the rent.
Just the rent.
So the offset of us being able to charge other groups to utilize the space is that it is paying for myself and the company to run the facility and manage it. Because none of the money that's coming from the city to build this, or construction, or lease or loan, is paying for any of the business management of the facility.
How much do you think you can make per 90 seats? How much are we, like, I looked at the business plan, I'm just, I'm just curious. Is it something you feel very comfortable that you'll be able to be able to manage with just the shows you're doing? Or do you have to have people running the space to be able to make it pencil?
We, as a company, could manage it if we turn and burned by ourselves. But that is what we are actively working against. And part of what has made us successful so far is how much we are bringing up the others in the community and trying to support them as well by having this facility and having a space. Because that was our pain point when we first started. How much you make totally depends on your audience. And part of what we're doing is we are audience-based building right now for a facility that will seat 300 people in the future. We're supporting that the other groups can have a place and Rancho Cordova can be known for a place that has these high-quality arts and a location that you want to sit in and watch these arts in. Now, if we sold $25 tickets for a musical, that's a Broadway musical with a Broadway star coming, we could sell $12,000 in one night. But the costs that outweigh the costs of productions are immense. Could cost anywhere from $20,000 to $50,000 to put on one theatrical production. And theater arts, performing arts do not bring in very much money. So they are supported by grants and loans and community sponsors and supporters. So you can technically bring in quite a lot of money per show, but you're not having gross income.
And we get to benefit from that happening, which is sort of the trade-off for the public. So you've, in the times we've talked to you here, you've had a pretty good, like, business sense of how this all works. So I appreciate that. And I've seen your business plan. Can you imagine you're in Hummingbird's shoes? Would the rent you anticipate charging them work for them, from what you know of them? Just, or any example like them?
We're actually really transparent with all the groups that we want to be a part with us. And we're going to be discussing with them, the groups that we know. Hummingbird Theater particularly is going to be a part of the discussions of what a reasonable cost and charge would actually look like. Because we're aware that, you know, the, the rent is covered for these, these five years that we're going to be in there, or the first five years we're going to be in there. But we still have to have funding coming in and we still have to run a business. And we do want it to be affordable. We know what it costs to go into places ourselves. So I don't have a set cost right now, but it is in our active plans to discuss with other groups, the reality of it. I mean, it's not going to be free because it can't be as a business.
I understand. Other comments for Courtney?
So as you mentioned, this does not bring in a lot of income revenue. And as such, a lot of parents would not want to put their kids in acting or creative or theater classes. But there are a lot of students that would be interested in this. So would you offer free or discounted classes to our, our youth?
Potentially, yes. We've talked about that. We've also talked about having like internships and joining in with the colleges and such. But I don't mean to be contradictory, but the number one actual income that comes in for theater and performing arts is from children. It's from workshops and acting and families and grandmas and aunts and brothers and sisters paying the $25 tickets to come and see their children dress up as Annie. So it is actually a huge benefit, children, and financially for theater groups. But yes, we do have in talks to do that. It all depends on when we get into the building and the partnerships that we can make. That all the conversations we've had so far is when you get in that building and you're there, let's talk. And so our very first step now, after all of this backwork, is to get into a building and start making those, those connections and those agreements and those educational outlets.
So that could be potentially part of the agreement that you could offer free or discounted classes?
Potentially.
Do you have an option for the piece of property yet?
Yeah, we're already, ready to sign our loan. We were supposed to, or our lease agreement was supposed to be signed months and months ago. It's tailored to be signed March 1st, April 1st. And yes, it's well-passed, picked and blueprinted out and everything.
All right. Is there any public comment on this item?
We do not have any public comment.
All right. Councilors, any additional advice? Do we have one modification to the agreement in front of us that you mentioned?
Yes. And the resolution in the last whereas, it currently reads the loan will be secured with a security agreement and fixture filing. It should read that the loan will be secured with a construction promissory note, a rent payment promissory note, and with a security agreement fixture and filing. Just need to add in those two other agreements.
And there's a commitment to six shows, but not to a partner's six shows, or whatever the number would be?
Correct. The current agreement is just for the six shows provided by Rise Up Theater.
Is there a commitment to the youth training clinic stuff? I thought I saw that somewhere.
Yes, there is both classes as well as for both adults and youth. And it does not have the number of classes that will be provided, just that they will be providing acting classes for both youth and adults.
But that's a business plan item for you?
Yeah, we, we can offer them, but until we build that audience base, we can't guarantee that people will take the offer.
Other comments?
No, but I think, I think it's appropriate to move the resolution as modified.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? I would suggest a modification, if you are willing, just include six shows by you, six shows by others. Is that the appropriate number?
If it's listed as a production and not a show, I think that that is appropriate.
Whatever the language would be. So from a practical point of view, that would give us 12 a year. So on, what would that mean? Like there's 12 dead weekends in the, in the year, or?
No, so that was our bare minimum is what we provided. We, we wanted to say minimally, this is what we can provide to you in this space. So there's a lot of room to grow. There's already planned, in the first year, there's seven productions already lined up once we sign. So no, it will definitely be more than six. That is just the bare minimum from what we would do outside of allowing other people to utilize the space as well.
Okay. Would you object to six plus six then, if that number's appropriate?
I would not. I would have to bring it to my board, of course, but I, we would not be against adding.
Maybe there's a way to not make it six plus six, but a total 12, however they want to split up whether their productions or other productions. Because I think that's the question of, what, it sounded like you might do more than six productions. And so is it 12 total and kind of however that splits out between the, either their own performances or other partners?
Your runs are three weeks?
Yes, just for that type of production.
Right. And someone else, a community group, would they have a three-week run, or would that typically be?
It depends on what their, their model is and how they're working. Because it's all rights-based, right? We would be paying for the rights to utilize a show, a musical rights for 99-seat theater. We're paid for our first production in the new space. And it's running at around $8,000 for 99 seats for 12 shows.
For the rights.
So another theater group might not be able to afford that much.
Right. Okay.
It will also be utilized for like comedy sports and improv.
Comedy sports?
Yeah, comedy sports is improv.
It's comedy basketball.
Yeah, we've, Comedy Spot.
She didn't say basketball. Don't tease me.
Comedy Spot in Sacramento has asked about it. There's people here in Rancho Cordova who are part of that group.
Oh, wow.
Who are looking for space.
Are you talking about Jack? Is that Jack Zawald?
No.
Is that him coming up here? Jack's now doing, he's now doing.
That's great.
Oh, that's true.
And also, you know, small band groups, musicians, comedians. It's set up to bring in a lot of people. So I think we could easily accommodate six other productions.
Okay. If, yeah, if your board obviously has to agree to that, but we could pass that today, I think. And then if there was a problem, it could come back. Otherwise, you'd be good. You guys acceptable with that?
It's your baby. Pull the trigger. Let's do this. You've been wanting arts here forever.
All right. Well, this is a momentous night then, if we not only heard about that other facility.
Still.
But also this one. That's a big art step. Oh, will you be an active participant in like the Rancho of Arts organization?
As in what? Which form?
Why don't you cover that after the meeting?
That's really visual.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a motion on the floor for a while.
That's visual.
And second?
Motion made and seconded. You accepted that amendment. Staff clear on what it is? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Absolutely yes.
Vice Mayor Pulapati?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Future agenda items?
Ooh, I would like one. I need to talk about the connector with you guys.
Recording in progress.
Like have a meeting with all of us somewhere?
Yeah, about the connector. Yes, and I want to be there because I'm the chair of the connector. Yeah, but I want to actually talk to everybody about it.
Very good. We are going to adjourn to closed session. Is there any public comment on our closed session topics, as noticed?
The clerk's office has not received any public comments. I see Daryl moving. Daryl does not have public comment.
All right, very good. We're going to adjourn to closed session.